...on Monday, August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. in the boardroom of the Robson Administration Building, eight oh one Letherton Street, Robson, Texas, at which time the agenda items will be discussed. In the course of the meeting, the board may change the order of business at its discretion without advance notice. First item on the agenda, call to order, go on.
Mr. Martinez present?
Martha Martinez present.
Martha Holdon present.
Lori Garza present, not with us at the moment, Mary Cantu, Ismael Gonzalez, and Hector Lopez. Next item on the agenda, moment of silence, prayer. Ms. Holdon, do you have a prayer for us?
Yes. Lord, you have entrusted us, as stewards of your creation, please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our business, our suppliers, our students, and our workforce. May we be always mindful of your service. We confess that we are nothing without you, and we trust in you always and completely. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Holdon. Next item, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Next item, our vision and ambition statement. Would one of our trustees like to recite our vision and mission statement?
Our vision statement, inspiring lifelong learning by providing limitless opportunities for success.
Our mission statement, empowering individuals today to prepare for tomorrow.
Thank you, trustees. Next item on the agenda, public participation. Yima?
None, thank you, Yima.
Next item, public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on the adoption of the proposed two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three tax rate.
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to open up a public hearing for the community at six oh three under item six as read.
Tris, either have a first, by Mr. Martinez to open up public hearings. Do I have a second?
I'll go in second.
Have a second. Any questions or comments? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Moreno, and all board of trustees. This is our public hearing for the budget and proposed tax rate. We've had several meetings leading up to today, and today's finally the big day to hopefully get our budget and our tax rate approved. Just a quick thing, a quick calendar events of how we got here. We had a budget workshop in April, in May, in June, we said we were going to set the tax rate on this day, as we were required to have. We had our budget workshop on August ninth, on August eleventh. I published the notice in the caller times announcing that we were having a public hearing. So we have really checked all the boxes, make sure that we've done everything we need to do to get here today. So again, I'm going to go over the presentation of the budget for the general fund, interest in sinking, and food service fund, which are the three legally required budgets that the board is required to approve. And then we'll talk about the tax rate. If at any time anyone has any questions, please feel free to tell me.
Real quick, on the public hearing, is the caller time drawing the media item we use to?
Correct.
To make the community know about it?
Yes. And we also have it on our website as well.
The public hearing?
Yes. So the factors that are influencing our budget for this year, student enrollment and attendance, because we know that our district is funded, or school districts in general are funded based off of our average daily attendance. So we're always very cognizant of what our enrollment is, and making sure that our students attend school on a daily basis. Recruitment and retention of our staff, making sure that we're recruiting the highest quality staff. Covid nineteen, the pandemic, is still causing us some issues. The increase in property values through the certified values has caused us to have to decrease or experience a compression in our tax one, in our tier-one tax rate, which we'll talk about later. One of the other things we look at is federal funding. What is available for us as far as grants, our federal grants? You know, we try to use those as possible, but we keep in mind that those are supplement, not supply. We also check to see what is out there that T E A makes available to districts so that we can apply. And then, of course, inflation is causing us to experience some increases in things like fuel and other items. So enrollment, I always like to look at what was our enrollment? How did we end last school year? So this is the P E N T report that we upload to T E A every year. And so our average daily attendance last year before any sort of operational amendments was two thousand and seven. Now remember, we did base the budget off of two thousand and eighty-nine. We experienced eighty-four point five percent attendance. And so had we stayed there, had there been no operational minutes, we would have received less state aid than what we're going to receive. Luckily, T E A announced for the first four, six weeks, that they would take either our attendance average for the current year, or they would go back to the nineteen-twenty school year and use that attendance percentage. And so for us, it was more beneficial for them to use that attendance percentage, because for us, it was ninety-one point seven percent, whereas we were looking more at eighty-six, eighty-seven percent. So that is going to adjust our ADA to twenty-one, twenty-seven, which is a little bit more than what I had set the budget. So we should experience an increase in state aid for this fiscal year, twenty, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, than what even I had anticipated. So that is really great. So setting up the budget for next year, we have to make some assumptions. We have to decide, what do we feel our ADA is going to be? What do we feel our enrollment's going to be? And so I always like to give ten years' worth of history. So when we look at our ADA, in two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and fourteen, we were experiencing an ADA of two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight. And that sort of has declined over the years. We've seen the biggest decline from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, and that's, of course, because of the pandemic. And so I set the enrollment at twenty-four, twenty for the year. And if we took eighty-five percent attendance, which is what we've been averaging the last two years, our ADA for the year would be two thousand and fifty-seven. And so I kind of want to look at our enrollment. I looked at snapshot enrollment over the last six years. And so you'll see from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two, our enrollment has been dropping. There was a year in two thousand and twenty where we experienced a two, an increase of two students. But from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, we lost a hundred and fifty-nine students. And from twenty-one to twenty-two, we lost a hundred and twenty-one students. So for this budget, I was a little bit, I kind of felt that we wouldn't lose as many students, so I did reduce the number of students by sixty. And so that is how I came up with a enrollment of twenty-four, twenty. And again, our ADA on that is two thousand and fifty-seven, which is eighty-five percent of the enrollment.
And as we progress through the presentation, trustees, we do have some really good news for you as far as enrollment is concerned, but I'll leave it at that. I'll just cut the season.
So our P E N T snapshot, every year, I just like to show where exactly our students are at. This chart looked different last year because we had a release. And so when I went back and I switched the chart for the previous years to put a release with the elementary, but you'll see that although we are experiencing a decline of almost five percent district-wide, we see our biggest decline in junior high, where we lost eight point eight percent of the enrollment. Elementary saw about a seven percent decline, but our high school did experience almost a three percent increase. So the tax rates. So our certified values came up, increased significantly, in my opinion. It went up nine point four-two percent. I didn't expect it to increase that much, but it did. We knew it was going to increase, because two years ago, the appraisal district, not through anything that we did, they felt the property value study. And so they had one year of grace to make sure that they were within ranges of what the comptroller said our values should be. So I expected an increase, I just didn't think it was going to increase as much as it did. So we went from six hundred and seventy-two million to seven hundred and thirty-five million on our certifying values. And so just quickly, I did this on the last board meeting, but for our first rating, indicator twenty says that we kind of have to talk about certified values and how they've trended over the last couple of years. And so you'll see collections have been six point four million in two thousand and twenty. It went down a little bit in two thousand and twenty-one to six point three. We're projecting about six point, another six point four in two thousand and twenty-two, and then in two thousand and twenty-three, we're projecting six point eight. And the reason for that is because our certified values did increase. So when you're certified, I mean, our certified values are increasing, but because of that, we anticipate a decrease in our state aid. And so you'll see that in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, we're going to anticipate getting about seventeen point two million in state aid. But in two thousand and twenty-three, we're going to experience a decrease, but because of that, is because of collections increasing. And so since we are talking about the first rating, I kind of just wanted to say that we did get our preliminary scores for the twenty-one, twenty-two year, which is based off of the two thousand and twenty-one year. And so we have increased from an eighty-eight to a ninety-two, and for that reason, we were given an A rating, which is superior to the. Really excited about that. So our current and our proposed tax rate, our current tax rate is one point five six three six. We are proposing today a tax rate of one point five zero three two. So the first part is our M and O tax rate, and that's broken up into tier one and tier two. So tier-one tax rate is a tax rate that is established really by the state. It looks at what the values are, and so we are given some, we are compressed, so when the, when the values go up, our tax rate kind of goes down. And, you know, all that happened through House Bill Three, where we wanted to give some relief, or legislators wanted to give some relief to our taxpayers, and so that they would burden, they would take more of the burden of providing state aid to districts, and taxpayers would pay a little bit less. So this year, our tier-one, because of our increase in our certified values, will go from point nine zero five three to point four four nine. And there's really nothing else we can do with that. That's the highest we can do, that's the highest we can set that tax rate. Then we have tier-two, where we have our golden and our copper pennies. That's where we had the T R E several years ago, where we were at seventeen cents. And then when House Bill Three, those were compressed as well. And so we're at eight, eight golden pennies and point zero five eight three copper pennies. Now that is an opportunity where we could increase the tax rate, because as we remember, there's only two ways to generate new revenue. We either increase our average daily attendance, or we increase the tax rate. So this is an opportunity where, in the future, we could maybe call another T R E so that we can get our tier-two to the seventeen cents. But with the M and O, it comes out to point nine eight three two. And then we are recommending that our I N S tax rate stay at fifty-two cents, for again, a total of one point five zero three two. So what has our M and O tax rate look like? In two thousand and fourteen, we had already passed the T R E, so it was at a dollar seventeen. It stayed that way all the way through two thousand and nineteen. Of course, two thousand and nineteen is when House Bill Three came, and again, they were hoping to provide some tax relief to our taxpayers, so we were starting to get compressed. You can see where our tax rate started going down. And so again, our proposed rate today is point nine eight three two. And our I N S tax rate, that kind of has gone in the opposite, where our M and O tax rate has gone down, our I N S tax rate has kind of gone up. We started at forty-six cents, and we are at fifty-two cents, and we are asking to stay the same. And again, part of that is because state aid on the I N S side is also based off of ADA. And so our ADA keeps decreasing, our certified values keep increasing. So in the eyes of the state, we've become wealthier. And so for that reason, our state aid goes down. At one point, our district was getting, was paying the majority of our debt service and our I N S fund, eighty percent of it was being paid for by state aid. But because the decline in our ADA and the increase in our certified values, right now, very little of it is going to be paid out of state aid. And I'm assuming that if trends continue, next year, we might flip and not get any state aid, and we'll be responsible for all our debt service. So truth in taxation. So truth in taxation always comes in, you know, we get our certified values, and then we have to let the comptroller, and we have to let the tax assessor, and everyone know what our certified values look like, and we got to complete our truth in taxation paperwork. And so what I want to start out with truth in taxation is, they treat us, they treat cities, they treat counties, they treat other authorities exactly the same. We're all in this box, and we're all filling out this truth in taxation paperwork. And so what they're looking at is, what tax rate do you need this year to generate the same amount of revenue as last year? And so as your certified values increase, it makes sense that what you would need to set your tax rate would decrease. However, what they don't understand is how we are funded. We are funded as our, we are funded based off of our tax rate and our state aid. So as the tax rate increases, our certified value increases, our state aid decreases. So they really don't, they really don't look at the full picture for us. And so they look and they say, okay, well, for this year, what the district would need to generate the same amount of property tax is one point three three eight two two eight. That's what the district, in their eyes, would need to set their tax rate in order to generate the same amount of tax revenue as last year. However, if we do that, they don't take into consideration that our state aid would decrease. And so if we set a tax rate that's higher than this tax rate, we have to, in effect, one, have a supermajority by the board to approve the tax rate, but we also have to say that we are increasing taxes. And we, we will, we have our, in your board binder, is the sample of the tax resolution that states, "The tax rate will effectively be raised by twelve point three three percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a hundred thousand dollar home by approximately one hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents." The same statement's also on our website right now. What they don't take into consideration, which they used to up until changes were made to truth in taxation, was the rate to maintain. And that's really what's important to us. What rate do we have to maintain to generate the same level of revenue to pay M and O and our debt service? And for us to generate the same amount as last year, we would need to set the tax rate at one point zero three nine eight eight zero, which is more than what we're setting it at. So this chart comes from Omar's template. He is the guru, it's the most-used template, there's other templates out there, don't get me wrong, but this is the most-used template that CFOs and business managers use to calculate the revenues for next year. And according to his template, you know, we need to actually have a higher tax rate in order to generate the same amount of revenue. But unfortunately, we're not able to do that. And so when you look at taxes for a homeowner in general, you'll see that the tax owner, the tax, sorry, can't see the numbers from up here. Last year, the average market value of a residence was eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-four. The average taxable value of the residence was fifty-nine thousand thirty-eight dollars. So with the tax rate that we approved last year, the average taxpayer paid nine dollars, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twelve cents. This year, the average market value of a residence is a hundred and eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. The average taxable value of residence is fifty-four thousand eighty-four dollars. And the reason it's lower than last year is because in May, there was an election where we asked voters, or the state asked voters, whether they wanted to increase the homestead exemption from twenty-five thousand to forty thousand. And that, that passed, and so homeowners are going to pay a little bit, they're not going to be taxed in such a higher amount, depending on what their house is appraised at. So with the tax rate that we, the first year where it says this year, we had actually put in the notice fifty-four cents for I N S and not fifty-two cents, because we weren't sure whether or not we needed to go up. But on the notice, it says that the average taxpayer will pay ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents less than the previous year. But the reality is, we're not going to go up to fifty-four cents in the I N S tax rate. We're only going to go up to fifty-two cents. So this year, an average homeowner will pay a hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents less than they did last year. Do we have any questions on that?
So although you're saying you have, we're increasing the tax rate, we're not, just to be clear.
It's, well, the overall tax rate's going down. It's less than the other. We're not generating any new revenue in reality. I mean, in the eyes of the truth in taxation, and the way that they calculate it, just by looking at taxes alone, it looks like we are, yes. But when you look at us as a whole, our taxes and our state aid, we're not. If your, if your home, if your home stayed, if your home was appraised at the same amount as last year, it would be paid, you would pay less. But if it went up. Well, if your values went up, you're going to pay the tax rate on your values, so you might, you're going to pay more. If your values went up. But had your values stayed the same, stayed neutral, you would, you would, you would experience a decrease. Because of the homestead exemption. Who's this name? So then we turn to compensation. We start with our retention stipends that you approved graciously on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. It was for twenty-five hundred dollars for three years. We've paid one year. So we still have twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So we've paid out the first installment of this fiscal year, which is fifteen hundred dollars. We paid it out on August fifth. In December, we will pay out a four hundred dollar stipend. And then at the end of this school year, anyone who stays to the next year will be eligible for a six hundred dollar stipend. Now, last year, we did pay that out in May, and this year, we decided that we would pay that out in late July. But it will be a total of twenty-five hundred dollars. So we look at salary increases for the past nine years. It looks like from nineteen, from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one, we were doing about one to two percent of midpoint. We did not give a raise in two thousand and twenty-two, but we did give a retention stipend of thirty-five hundred dollars, because it was the twenty-five hundred dollars that was promised, plus an additional thousand dollars in lieu of raise. Now, in May, we went ahead and we got the results from the Tasby Salary Study, and we implemented their recommendations. So every teacher this year is going to receive a one thousand six hundred and fifty-dollar raise. In addition, we, we moved the starting pay for each teacher to forty-seven thousand dollars. For clerical, paraprofessional, the starting pay for those positions was ten dollars and fifteen cents, and we moved that to twelve dollars an hour. And they will receive a three percent of midpoint pay increase. For our manual trades, the starting rate was nine dollars and forty-eight cents, and we moved that to eleven dollars. Again, they'll receive a three percent of midpoint, and then admin will also receive a three percent of midpoint with a twenty-five hundred dollar retention stipend. And so here's just a quick update of the teacher salary scale. Again, we were at forty-one, six thirteen. We moved it to forty-seven thousand, which was wonderful to be able to do in a year. We also increased the salary, the years of experience, it ended at twenty-eight plus. We went all the way to thirty-plus, so there was some additional adjustments at the end of the, of the teacher's skill. We also maintained the fifteen hundred dollar master's degree stipend, and three thousand for anyone who had a doctorate, which we don't currently have anyone on staff at this time. Next. Yes. Yes. Correct. So if you're on, on number, on year ten, which is fifty thousand dollars, and next year, we do not give a raise, then when you go to year eleven, the rest step for eleven will be fifty thousand dollars. It is, you do not increment values. Correct. So the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three T R S active care, we were very lucky, they moved the plans to a regional types, type of setup. So instead of, instead of the insurance companies giving a quote for the entire state, they set them up by region. So our region was very lucky that most of our plans are going to experience a decrease in their insurance, or they're going to remain neutral. Compensation to substitutes, we looked at substitute pay, we looked at what our competitors were doing, so we want to make sure that we stay competitive in that area. So we increased our substitute pay across the board for teachers and aides by ten dollars. For R N and L V N, we kind of stayed the same. And for food service, we did go up to the eleven dollars an hour. So we continued, I kept this slide in here, because last year, I had the exact same slide, and I said we were going to do a staffing study review, and we were going to do a pay study review, and we're happy to announce that we did both. We were able to make some serious gains, in my opinion, on the pay. And we're also looking at our staffing review to make sure that we cut through attrition and make changes as needed as positions come up. So we move to our general fund debt obligations. We still have our H D A C lighting retro payments. We have one for two thousand and twenty-three and one for two thousand and twenty-four. One is two hundred and twenty-six thousand, the other one is two hundred and fifty-five thousand a year. Those will both stay on the books until two thousand and twenty-eight. In addition, we have our maintenance tax notes for our field enhancements. The payment for this year is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. The following year, in two thousand and twenty-four, we're all going to experience an increase of sixty-one thousand, but this year coming up, the, the payment actually went down just a little bit, because we paid three hundred and forty-two thousand in two thousand and twenty-two. So it's going to go down a little bit in, in two thousand and twenty-three. Altogether, we have six million dollars in debt in the general fund, and next year, our debt, our debt service requirements are going to be eight hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and three dollars and ninety cents. So when we look at the general fund, as we set the budget, we always keep in mind that we have things we need to comply. We have to make sure that we're aware of our first ratings, to make sure that we're operating the way we should. We have M O E equity that came in through the middle of the fiscal year, that compares budget from one fiscal year to the other fiscal year. And so that's something that we definitely had to keep in mind as we generated the budget for this year. As the M O E states that with state and local funds, whatever we spent this year, the following year, we have to spend at least ninety percent of that, so we made sure that the budget's set up to do that. And then with I D A B states that whatever you spent on specialized this year, you have to spend that much or more, plus a dollar, pretty much. And then with IDEA B um states that whatever you spend on specialized this year, you have to spend that much more plus a dollar um pretty much the next year. It also, it also takes into consideration your um your pop, your your spit population. So campus allocations, I believe I brought the campus allocations to you. I think it was either March or April. We said we might make adjustments, but I haven't made any adjustments to the campuses. Uh, we still kept the higher allocations for the elementary schools and the junior high. Uh, we created a allocation for library because it used, it, in previous years, the library depended on the campuses giving them a budget. So the campuses can still do that, and we highly encourage them to still give the library some of their um basic funding, but we also give them an allocation and we give them their own budget. In addition, we put a little bit of money into PE, making sure that our, at our elementaries, our junior high, even our high school, that the PE coaches feel that if they have, if there are any needs, there is, there are some funds set aside for them to um to make purchases as needed. And then the rest of the budget was based off of allocations. And after looking at the allocations, I felt that um the per pupil uh per pupil amount was correct for the different allocations. Department budgets, we did decide across the board to drop all department budgets by five percent. There was an exclusion to the tax office because since our certified values went up, our bill is going to go up, so I increased that a little bit. Um, in addition, we experienced an increase in district-wide, and that's usually where we pay things like our property tax. And so I am expecting a pretty significant increase there. Uh, one of the places where we were going to see a a a decrease was in transportation because we paid off our um bus lease for sixty-one thousand dollars. So that should have shown a decrease there, but you're only seeing a decrease of forty-one thousand because we are experiencing an increase in fuel each month with inflation. We're paying about one to two thousand dollars more than what we had been paying. So I went ahead and I took care of that. But other than that, everything dropped about five percent except for safety and security. That is the top priority for us, and for that reason, we kept the budget the same. Uh, we have, we did request from all departments if there was any special projects or anything like that that they wanted to see in the new year. We vetted some of them, and the literacy initiative is something that we wanted to continue funding. Our students did a fantastic job last year of re- reaching their one point five million um goal of reading one point five million minutes. And so we are going to be funding uh Ms. McCombs seven thousand dollars. JJ AEP, we are paying twenty-five thousand dollars for the seat, or we have that budgeted as normal. And then we had some money budgeted for summer school, but we do feel that going forward, ESTER III and TEPOS might fund summer school going into the next year.
I'm sorry. Can we go back to number thirty-three on the department budget? Because you explained the the entrance and tax office and you explained the security and PE, but there is no explanation for special education or district one.
The property tax.
Okay, and what about this um special education stay the same?
I'm sorry, we didn't do anything special ed because of our MOE requirements, where we spend the same amount of money as the previous year. So we make sure that they keep their budget the same.
Make sure it's the same?
Correct. I get that one the same um for this year just because, you know, we are focusing on making sure that our kids come to school and that we have the attendance. So I just wanted to make sure that we have the budget there if we wanted to take any new initiatives or anything like that. So I just kept it the same. So our last five auditors fiscal years, I kind of just throw this slide in there because it's always good to see right before you see the budget, what the budgets look like previously. Um, one of the good things I can tell you about the bu, what our budget looks like right now, we have eleven point two million dollars in fund balance. If we wanted three months of operating, we'd only have to have six point six. So we have a really, really healthy fund balance right now. And so we've been building that fund balance over the last couple of years. So what TEA requires with state compensatory education is that when we budget, we have to budget those expenditures first. And so we look at our allocation based off of Omar's template. I predict, or we, the template shows that our allocation is going to be three million four hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred and one. So we make sure that we budget at least the fifty-five percent spending requirement. And so we have budgeted two million dollars. So that's, we're budgeting about a hundred and seventeen thousand more than what we need to budget for state comp ed. Now, the thing about state comp ed is this year, they changed the funding tiers. So that used, that the way state comp works is they have five tiers from low social, I mean, it's, it's um, I don't know, it's like um, it's based off of the children's addresses, and every zip code or GEO code is given a tier number. And so depending on what tier they're in, it determines what rate of, what weight of state aid we're going to get. So some, some uh neighborhoods have a higher tier, which means that they're more um, I guess, they're more likely to be in a poverty area than others. So it just depends on where our students are. So they just change what those rates are going to be. And so we haven't gotten that information. The TA. So they haven't. I I honestly do not know. I just know that they they said, they send out a spreadsheet and they have all the GEO codes of where everyone lives, and then we link them up. So they just switched all the funding percentages. I don't know what they're going to be. So this is based off of the previous and where our students live now. So what does the budget look like? Well, one of the things I wanted to put in there was, what if we adopted the budget at that one point three-three-eight I talked about earlier? That would bring our tax rate down to one point eight-one-eight-two. And so if we were to do that, we would experience a de- a deficit budget of seven point two million dollars. And the reason for that is what the state, what TEA says, you have to tax, you kind of have to do your own local effort. If you don't help me help you, I'm not going to help you. So if you don't tax what you need to tax, your taxpayers, we're not going to give you the full basic allotment. We're going to reduce your basic allotment by ninety percent. We're going to take away your transition formula grant. We're going to, the decrease in the basic allotment is going to impact all of your allocations, your GT, your spit, um, your career in technology. And for that reason, we, I mean, it would be detrimental to the district if we were to consider that tax rate at point eight-one-eight-two. So then we look at what the, what the general fund would look like if we did not have ESTER. And our state aid, I mean, our budget deficit would be three point one million dollars. So luckily, we still have some ESTER funds left for next year. We're going to have about a million dollars in ESTER two. And we're going to have uh some funds in ESTER three. We should have funds for, we're going to have about nine million dollars left in ESTER three. And so with with shifting some of our expenditures to ESTER two and ESTER three, we end up with a budget deficit of one million eighty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars. And so that is the budget that I am proposing today. We are going to use fund balance for that. We're going to use fund balance.
So that's why the one million is better, of course, than the three million to be definite.
Correct.
So what are you, you're going to do, like just a reclass from general fund to clear this out?
So uh at the end of the year, our fund balance will just go down. But everything else, a lot of it's salaries is what I'm supplanting. And so those will automatically be posted into ESTER two or ESTER three depending on what salaries are being supplanted.
I have a question. Why couldn't we do that before so we could get a, I don't know, balance the budget? Take it out of the general fund now versus have a deficit?
The. I guess I'm not understanding the question.
We have a, we have money in the general fund, one bit, when healthy, according to you, right?
Correct.
And now we have a deficit budget of one million point zero eight-four. So you're saying just now that we have money, we're going to transfer from the general fund to clear this deficit. Why couldn't we do it before so we can have a balanced budget?
So without ESTER, we would have three million dollars of a deficit.
Right, I get that.
So what I'm doing essentially is I'm taking about two million dollars worth of expenses, and I'm going to charge them in the new year to the other funds, leaving a deficit in the general fund. And fund balance, which is the eleven point two million that we have, will decrease as a result of that.
Right, forget that part. You just don't answer my question. Why aren't we doing, and why don't we balance the budget since we have a healthy general fund? That's my general question.
So in order to balance the budget, I would have to increase revenues by the two mon, by the million dollars. And so revenues, I can't, I can't do a line item. We have three types of revenues. We have local revenues, which is our property tax and other revenues that we get, such as athletic gate fees, um, any, anytime we charge a fee, which probably is very minimal. Though, that's our local taxes. Then we get state aid, which is our on behalf and our, our state aid or FSP payments from the state. And then we get federal funds, which is our Sharers payment and any indirect cost we get from our federal grants. There is no other revenue. I can't, I can't post fund balance as a revenue.
She can't, she can't just do a reclass because then that she's going against debt procedures pretending that we got this money as a revenue. We did it. It was.
Correct. It's not a revenue. The other reason why we don't want to do that is there's a, a first rating that says it looks at your local and your state revenues, and it looks to see whether or not you are within ten percent of what you budgeted. So if you get ten percent more, you get ten percent less, you will lose points on the first rating because you weren't accurate in your budgeting. So unfortunately, fund balance is not a type of revenue.
Right, I, I get that part, but again, you're saying that at the end of day, after all this is said, we do have a deficit, and you just said that you could transfer the money, right, from the general fund?
Just at the end, it'll be negative at the end because it's going to be, because like that local, there's no way of telling how much we're going to get in. So you can't really say, we're going to make a million, and then we don't even make that in taxes. We don't make that at the gates. We don't make that. So there's really no way of, we're going to have to just go into this deficit because you, you, we're going to come short. We're going to, same way to make a million, come short.
We're going to experience more expenditures than revenue. The way I see it is your, your checking account is zero. We're going to start the year at zero. We're going to start putting in revenue from the save or from whatever. We're going to start writing checks. And at the end of the year, we're going to be negative. So what we're going to do is, what I see it is, we're going to take from our piggy bank our savings. We're going to move that into the account to zero it out. But we can't start the year. I can't do a transfer from the piggy bank of a million dollars and start the account with a million dollars to begin with. So you're required as a board to adopt the budget by fund, by function. So this is what that would look like, and that is in your budget binder. Um, so again, we'll experience revenues of twenty-six point nine million, and we will experience expenditures of twenty-eight million. Now, again, as we go through the year and we see how revenues are looking, um, we will do everything we possibly can. You know, if I can find a way, if we have a grant, if I can supplant some more, I will do everything I can to minimize the deficit. But it's something that even if we were only to experience a million dollars, I'm going to tell you that the following year, it's, it's going to be considerably worse. It's going to be at least double if things don't change. So this is just um, this is kind of the beginning, but we kind of knew that going forward. I mean, we kind of knew that when we adopted the raises, that sustainability was something that we were really going to have to think about going forward. So what are my bu- budget recommendations? Of course, you know, seventy-five percent of our expenditures come from payroll. So making sure that we continue to eliminate the attrition, initiate a hiring freeze, making sure that when we do post, it's really for a position that's absolutely essential for the operation. You know, looking into campuses and department budgets, we can look and see how those are trending. Maybe in January, we decide we want to take a look, see what revenues look like, see what expenditures look like. Maybe at that point in time, decreasing the budget or making any uh freezing budgets.
And and this next year, we're going to zero-based budgeting.
Yes, and so we're going to start from the ground up, especially with the departments. And everyone's going to start with a budget of zero, and you're going to have to justify how your expenditures are going to get to whatever it is that they're going to get there. And we're also going to go back and we're going to look at your old budget. So if you say you spend this amount of money on this, I'm going to go look at the last two years to see, are you really spending, did you really spend that amount on that over the last couple of years?
She's going to do that.
Yes.
It's coming September first?
Next year.
Next year.
Sure, yes. And is this going to be across the board, like this uh hiring freeze, across the board, sir?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a strategy. So we've already been, uh, based on our TASBY study, we've already very aggressively been looking at that because we have a number there as old that we're trying to gain there to, to reduce. So that in itself has been, we've been doing that for a few months now. Um, so as we go forward again, zero-based budgeting, and yes, principals, I don't even, every.
This is a public hearing. You have to question.
But I, really ideally, it's, it's, yes, it's going to take a lot more effort, a lot more work. But the thing is, uh, in districts that they get any type of situation like this, uh, you have to start from there because if you justify every dime, every dime, you start moving forward. But after you get it going the first year, then it just, it really starts to work a lot better. We're a lot more efficient, and we're able to gain some, some money, in fact, that we need to, to be able to address that, that deficit. And that way, our students, because as you said, our students, they get the full benefit of what they need in our education.
Sir, what's the difference between a department budget and a function budget? And can we get like a cheat sheet that mirrors them the same? So like your department budget, seven oh one, two percent, but on a function, there's eleven, twelve, thirteen, twenty-one.
Because it's all minis. It, it could be, some departments might exclusively just be in one, but um some can be in all.
And is this a must-be budget, the department budget? Because there's, it's a, it's a huge difference by a margin.
Well, the, the function budget has the salaries.
Okay, this one does it.
Correct. So uh reduce campus department budgets as we go through the year necessary. I definitely am highly recommending that we hold a tax gratification election. Um, that's something that we, the dis- the district has requested of taxpayers before, and it passed before. This would increase our revenue by five hundred thousand dollars a year going forward. And then always making sure that our expenditures match the academic mission and the board goals. Any questions about general fund? So we go to interest and sinking. So our total outstanding principal is forty million five hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Our debt service requirements for next year is four point one million. We are recommending that our tax rate stay at fifty-four, fifty-two percent, I mean fifty-two cents, I'm sorry. Again, when I came up with that number, I have vetted that number with Moa Casey. We've, I've spoken to Dusrette Hidena, our financial advisor, and all three of us are on the same page that fifty-two cents is where we should stay. I am projecting that our fund balance to be approximately two hundred thousand at the end of the year, although that could change once we get, um, we look at our final tax collections. Uh, so this is what our debt schedule looks like. And so we have debt service payments all the way into twenty forty-three. And so here again is the spreadsheet that the board is used to see from Mr. P. Hidena. And again, there with the fifty-two cents and based off of an ADA of two thousand fifty-seven, that is key, that we have to at least meet the two thousand fifty-seven. We will not require a transfer from the general fund to the maintenance, I mean, to the interest and sinking fund.
So just again, for the general public, just assuming nothing on this. So when we say twenty fifty-seven, two thousand fifty-seven, what we're saying is average day attendance. Although our attend, our enrollment, let's say, is that, uh, I'm just giving you a, a broad number, twenty-four, uh, twenty-four hundred students. The average, though, of the twenty-four students is what? Twenty fifty-seven that we had from last year. So our budget is based on the two thousand fifty-seven that are showing up every day. Even though they're enrolled, if they're not showing up every day, we can't. Even though they're enrolled, if they're not showing up every day, we can't get that average. So for our principals and, and myself and our team as a whole, it's critical that we, number one, we will not go under the twenty fifty-seven. I mean, that's just a set standard. It's to increase. So if we increase on the ADA, what's happening automatically? Our revenue's coming in. And so, so that, we start to get the full effect of the twenty-four hundred students at this point. Now, the good news I'm gonna share with you a little bit later on is, we're looking pretty good as far as recapturing where we were even starting off last year already today. Last year at this time, we were still under over a hundred, over a hundred students. So today, that's gonna be some of the good news, we'll give you specific numbers on. So now it's about getting those students to ensure that, that they're coming to school every single day in our seats, every single day. Then that in itself is gonna start to, to close up that gap naturally.
So again, um, the board is required to approve the budget by function, and so debt service is all in function seventy-one. So this is what it would look like for the debt service fund. And we are at a balanced budget. So child nutrition, here again, this is all based off of average daily attendance because it, it depends on how many kids are gonna come to school every day to determine whether or not we're gonna hand out meals. And so I increased this budget just a little bit from last year. Uh, I feel that, you know, as stuff from Reynolds said, we're looking good, kind of starting the year. And so total revenue of, um, two point six million. And we do have a balanced budget where I anticipate total expenditures to be about two point six million. Um, very good, we're looking really good in the child nutrition budget. Last year, we had a budget deficit of four hundred thousand dollars. This year, as of August seventh, um, revenues exceeded expenses by four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. We started with the, uh, beginning fund balance at three hundred and thirty-four thousand. So we're doing so well that I'm probably gonna have to write a corrective action plan because we have too much fund balance. So we're really gonna look and see, um, next year, our reimbursement rates are gonna go down, and we are gonna see an increase in labor because of our, our raises. But we're hopefully also going to be, um, fixing some of our equipment and using excess fund balance that way. So that concludes my presentation. Again, here are the three legally required budgets that the board is required to adopt by fund and function. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions again are, of course, obviously for our board of trustees, but anyone here in the public as well. So what's our magic number, guys, as far as ADA? We, no less than twenty fifty-seven, no less.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Next item on the agenda.
Um, Madam President, I can make a motion to, um, close our public hearing and reconvene into a regular board meeting.
I have a first by Mr. Martinez and a second by Ms. Wogan. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're back to regular. Sir, next item, the bring tight celebrations.
Trustees, uh, we just can't get enough of, of celebrating our young ladies and our powerlifting team. So, so they're back. Their, our, our young ladies are back. And again, we have, uh, Coach Holmes is here to help us celebrate, and Coach Perry. And, uh, and anyone else that y'all'd like to recognize, but come on up, gentlemen. And let's celebrate our young ladies, uh, for their incredible, incredible... But we're gonna cut this off a little bit today as well.
Ladies, let's go, let's go, let's go. Ready for four? Uh, some of our seniors, well, I guess they're not seniors now technically, they're college freshmen, uh, are doing college things, one's working, other one's also doing college things. But the, the younger, the younger class, four of the seven, that, uh, will be, uh, looking to repeat and become champ champs this upcoming year are here with us. Uh, so, yeah, round of applause again, my God. And then we, uh, we also, it's different this time, as you can see, as the ladies are showing it, uh, our state championship rings. Probably should not talk about money being spent right now.
Coach, zero-based budget, coach.
Yeah, you're right. So, uh, I know you, those that can't see, they all have one. And then, uh, the board of trustees, you have one that's actually gonna be, uh, in our school trophy case. Our school trophy case. Uh, and the reason of that is, um, we know that we weren't the first team to win a state championship, but wanted to, uh, look at the other state championship rings that, uh, that came across, went through, uh, Facebook and actually got a picture of one, and I was like, oh, on the next team, cause it will be the next team, there was a state in Robstown. They won't have to go find the picture, they'll just go to the... So each of the rings, uh, has, has the R, has state champs on it. On the one side, it's a young lady squatting, has their last names there, uh, in their weight classes. On the other side, it says Robstown, big and bold. Um, has the, uh, THSWPA, two thousand twenty-two, division two. And inside of each of these rings, which are super nice, is actually their first and last names, so nobody could ever take it. It's awesome.
I'm way too young to remember this, because I was pretty young when this happened, and I know this is kinda corny, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Y'all remember Shazam? Right? So Shazam was a superhero, and he, well, anyway, he put out his fist like this, and he had a big ring. Can y'all give us?
Shazam.
Congratulations both. It was very well worth the ride. It was an amazing year.
Congratulations, ladies. Keep it up. Nice year.
And our parents, thank you so much for being here to celebrate, you know, with our students and the unfortunate children. Thank you so much.
Take care, everybody. Um, trustees?
Uh, trustees, what I'm, uh, requesting is, because we, uh, we have several items on the agenda, but we also have some guests here, uh, today that will be, uh, along with our, our counsel, they'll be, uh, sharing with us some information on the new initiative, uh, as it relates to chapter three thirteens. And at this point, uh, Madam President, what I'd like to request is that we go to closed session to address that one item, and then we'll come back out and continue the, uh, the rest of the agenda and go back to closed session at the appropriate time.
So that's twelve B, trustees, twelve B. I'll make a motion that we, uh, go, go into closed session under twelve B. Texas Government Code, section three five, five five one point zero seven one.
I'll make a sec, uh, a second motion, Ms. Wogan.
I have a first and a second. Do I have any question or for discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed?
For, for clarification, we're just gonna discuss that and be correct, right?
Yes, um... The board will now convene in closed session in pursuit of the Texas Government Code, sections five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero eight seven. Consultation with legal counsel regarding legal issues pertaining to possible applications for a price value limitation under chapter three one three of the Texas Tax Code by Project Visicon and to discuss commercial or financial information received by the district from a business prospect. Thank you.
Uh, we, we do make a motion, we do approve, we do...
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're now in closed session.
Be back.
Have a first and a second to reconvene from quote session, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're back and open. Trustees, we will be going to thirteen B to finish our executive session item. Do I have a motion to continue to thirteen B?
One second.
First by Bobby and the second by Sessa, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, sir, go ahead, or do I, trustees, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion. I move for the Board of, the Board of Trustees to authorize consideration of the application submitted for Project Rubicon. I further move that we make the following authorizations. Number one, the superintendent is authorized to engage Moke, Casey, and Associates as financial consultant, and Walsh, Callejo, Trevino, Kyle, and Robinson P.C. as legal counsel for the purpose of processing the applications. Number two, the superintendent and consultants are authorized to proceed with action on the application under District Policy CCGB Local. And number three, the Board sets a large application fee of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for application fee for Project Rubicon in accordance with Board Policy CCGB Local.
Trustees, I have a first and a second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Trustees, we now reconvene to item eight.
Thank you, ladies, gentlemen.
Everybody, we did not eat. Everybody, we did not eat.
There item eight?
Trustees, we now go in our information section, just as a quick reminder, has a tasky convention on September twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. Make sure, if you haven't finalized with Ivma, that you do contact Ivma so she can finalize your arrangements. Letter B, School Board Continuing Education, this is very, very important trustees, from November the first of twenty twenty-one through November first of twenty twenty-two. Ivma will have your specific information on your hours. So please make sure, and she will also reach out to you individually. We'd also just like to, trustees, as we move forward, we have several items here, but again, we just want to make sure that we keep you in the loop. On the next one, we have Diana coming up, but she just can go very briefly, but just, let me just give the highlight, actually right in front of you. What I was saying earlier is, last year at this time, we were still out there about, I would say, over a hundred kids for sure, at, at the minimum. But we didn't actually have more, so, we ended up the school year last year at two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine. Now, that's not where we want to be, we want to get back to where even we were three years ago. But it is what it is as far as we work based on what happened with this, as far as with COVID. But we're gonna restart this year, we're gonna move forward, so at two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine that we ended the school year. Drum roll, please, alright? So today, as of today, we're at two thousand four hundred and sixty-one. So we're, last year at this time, we're short over a hundred, right now, now we've met and exceeded by two, even though it's two or three. It's the motion that is coming with that, so we're in a better place. Now we need to, what we'll start to establish in early September, all our principals already started working on their, their no-show list. Once we get our no-show list finalized, we'll go out there and start knocking on doors and really start bringing even more of our kids back into our system. But again, hats off to you trustees, hats off for administrators for continuing the innovation our school is looking at, and maintaining our kids first, and then attracting at that point as we move forward. So that was our enrollment update.
If you don't get cheese again.
At this point, also I'd like to bring up on letter D, athletic facility rentals, and this is something that trustees, you've had a lot of interest in, as far as our discussions and as we move forward. Continue to make our school district even more attractive, not only within ourselves, our kids first, and our families, but also attractive out to our neighbors. So what we've asked is Coach Perry and Coach Holmes to put together a plan for us, and trustees, today is just a draft. He does have something on the website already, but this is a draft. I'd like to gather any input that you have today, we can offer that to him, and if not, he'll be ready to start posting it, then it's a little read the document. So go ahead, Coach Perry?
Alright, and yes, I mean, kind of one of the steps we want to take here as we kind of enter this post-COVID time, everybody's getting back out, trying to be more active doing things, we want to, you know, as we know, the school is a heart beating community, we want to continue to be that for everybody, provide the local youth organizations a place to, you know, safely participate in their sports, whatever the case may be. In doing so, we want to make sure it's physically sound, and so I was kind of put this together to address the direction that we want to head. Where we're at currently, we form partnerships with local youth organizations, we work with both the Little League in baseball, and then we had a football scrimmage that had large attendance this past weekend as well. So anybody that's, that's Rockstown Little League, that's Rockstown Youth Sports, we really want to facilitate, continue to facilitate those relationships. Right now, we are also charging a premium price for our playoff games because we have premium facilities. No one's better than I at the prices. We've held several baseball playoff games this past spring, the past two years. We, I think we charge more than, basically more than everybody else, because I think we have the nicest facilities, is pretty much the general consensus around here locally.
What's that premium price?
It is on the website. I'll talk my head, I think it is, I know for football, it's twenty-five hundred base just for the rental, and then it's additional hourly workers. And it's not quite as much for, for baseball, I want to say it's fifteen hundred plus, or maybe two thousand plus the hourly workers. But it's more, it's more than anybody else is, it's more than Corpus is charging, San Antonio ISD, it's all of the, it's one of the higher ones for sure. Where we want to go, like I said, the, for URL the, back on the left side, the playoff rental agreements, they are online currently on the school website, on the athletics page. But we want to continue to help facilitate the growth of local youth sports, maintain the top athletic facilities in the area. But we also now want to provide a transparent document for all facility rental. It's kind of just been hit or miss, as I've been here, people reach out to me and have to kind of decide, well, is it, how many Rockstown kids do you have? Is it, is it really a youth organization, is it, you know, privately ran? Are you going to make, are you charging anything? So we're kind of just trying to streamline that process. Well, I don't want it to be in my discretion, I want, I want it just to have the process that we're going through. So how we get there is we have to continue to protect and support our own, meaning we, we care about all kids, we want to help everybody here locally, but if they're from Rockstown, we're going to treat them like they're extra special to us, because that's exactly the case. We want to continue to showcase our facilities, it is a great way for people, I mean, it's an advertisement for them to see it, and see that we really are investing into our youth in that manner. And we want to make sure that the, like I said, that the rentals are physically sound. As much as we want to help everybody, I wish we could just say, come one, come all, we trust everybody, it's all going to be taken care of, and look, it's just, it's just not the case. And as far as electricity, bathroom usage, things like that, they just have to be taken into consideration. So how do we get there? I kind of scanned over various districts in the state, looked at different methods that they use, and it's, different districts do it different ways, have it in separate categories, and just trying to find one that I thought was the most unique and appropriate for, for Rockstown. And so, we want to make sure that we have a transparent fee schedule, as well as a user-friendly online application, is the, the direction that we want to head. So if you see the, the document that was, everybody should have a copy of.
Oh, do you have it?
Yes, no?
Okay, you can go.
You, you go through and you see it's divided into categories, this is a similar one to, that I've seen from some other districts, it had to be altered a little bit to, to best fit our community. And so I can't see it correctly, I probably should have grabbed a copy myself, but, so it's in sections.
You can also look behind you and just.
Alright, so you have zero, one, two, three, and four as the, the fee levels. And the zero is going to be our Rockstown ISD student groups, any booster organizations, parent organizations, or school affiliated organization. I know the district had a, a contract, I believe, with the DACs of the Catholic Church for the, with St. Anthony's, with the Little League, or something like that, which was something we want to continue to facilitate. And we're not looking to make money off of any of these local organizations, we want to provide a service to them by being able to use our facilities. And so you see in there, there's, there's no particular. But that's really what I came up with on, on the bottom. If they need a custodian present at that, then that's, I put fifteen dollars because that's average of the custodial hour rate for them to use that. Restrooms, like I said, that's going to be included with the baseball, softball, baseball, and football fields. And then also an opener and closer at five dollars a trip, which really just is accounting for the gas that a coach uses to show up early enough in the game and come back late if he closes the corner. And so, and I've had a few people reach out to me in the community and they, you know, they're going to start charging, curious if we're going to start charging different things like this. And I told everybody that the intent is not to make money, turn this into a business venture for, for local organizations. We want to continue to support them as best as we can. Most of them, we talked about, you know, the, the small cars, the ten-dollar charge. They said they could get a, no big deal, or they would get a sponsor if we got people covered and just say, here's a hundred dollars for you for the essential practice for your season. But I think just coming up with this system is going to make it a much more streamlined, people can go straight to the website, see this. Next, I'm, I'm working on a, a Google form where they would basically just answer the questions of when they're going to use it, which category they feel that they are part of, if it's zero, one, two, three, or four, which facility they're trying to use. And then you can figure out, get back to them with a, they can essentially figure out what their own quote would be. But then this would be the application that they will use in order to, to put that in ahead of time. And that's kind of where we're, where we're at with it right now. Like I said, I just want to make it where it's transparent. I don't want anybody to feel that it's at my discretion or I'm showing favoritism towards any certain sport, organization, anything like that. I want it to be clear and precise on the website for anybody to view whenever they have to.
Dr. White, so if someone uses their field, is there a lot of, I guess, a limited liability from us to whoever's using the field?
There would be waivers.
There would be, so let's just say we lend it to organization C. If somebody gets hurt, who's liable for that? Us or them?
Well, because it's, it's on the school facility, then there's, there's legal protection for, for school district. Accident, if somebody falls or something again, because it's on, on school district property. If you got something more that you'd like to share, Ms. Riggs?
Certainly we're immune to any sort of, um, things where anyone asks.
Because we're a public school? And, and they know that? Do these people know that?
But we, we do the waivers or stuff like that for life just for really more documentation purposes as well.
But we are letting them know that. So if somebody comes and wants to rent our field, are we letting them know that? If anything happens, you're liable, we cannot hold this accountable?
We should definitely include that on the.
I, I think that would be a great idea.
Is that what the waiver would come in as?
A waiver. And, and most of these, I mean, a lot of these, like Perfect Game, the, the baseball group that we work with, they have unlimited liability insurance and they have all that. The for-profit, the more organizationally driven ones are going to have all that paperwork to fight it. It'll be the local ones, it'll be used to have the, the rest of the school for sure.
I'm going to have to see this. Thank you. Thank you, Coach Perry.
As far as, on the custodians, if it is one of our custodians, we have to make sure that it's not just what's in our compensation plan. And also, we can, if it is overtime.
I was going to say that.
If they've already worked their forty hours, so that would be fifteen dollars. So we can work with Coach Perry so that we can align the, the.
Because we would have to pay overtime.
So even if it opens the gate and how much that, that pays.
Well, when we, trustees, after we finalize all the numbers, we'll bring you an updated copy and then at that point.
And the, and the, and it could be omitted from there if it needed to be. Really ninety-nine percent of the people that use them are for, are for practices and things like that and they don't need a custodian actually present. It would just be for the ones that are having, um, yeah, right.
But eventually a custodian would have to go over there. I, I know last year there was an issue where I, I went out there to look at some things and there was a tournament like two weekends before or a month before and the trash was still there. So who, like, who, who makes the communication to make sure it goes in?
Well, I mean theoretically, I mean, if somebody halfway fills up a trash can at a, at a practice, I mean, we should, we should be making constant.
When the, when the Perfect Game tournament was happening, our, the baseball parents, they cleaned up the field. And we were providing a place to go throw trash and all that. So I think, I know what you're saying, a custodian did work during the, the league, um, playtime. So I think, I don't know how the payment was there for the custodian there. I don't know how that worked. But during the tournaments, usually the parents clean up the field.
But it'll be standardized.
Right, and typically, I mean, if the custodians are, they should be making the rounds around the athletic facility, trash should be consistently picked up regardless. So it's not really requiring more, I mean, the bag may be heavier than it would have been had they not had a practice, but it's not necessarily, it's things that they should be doing within the school workday anyways. It's not really additional unless it is a tournament or something like that outside of the hours. And then, um, and, uh, back on the forum, I kind of had it, I didn't really want to have to worry about hourly, so I just said this, this was the cost per practice slash game slash two hours timing for that. Just that way we're not having to worry about if somebody did something for an hour and forty-seven minutes and having to figure out the exact cost for it. So just kind of the flat, if they're going to use it. And based on the people that have asked thus far, I mean, I think this really helps to support the, the local organizations and, and somebody's not going to be asked quick for outside organization to come unless they truly have the, the resources and the funds to be able to support it.
Well, thank you, Coach Perry, for your willingness to share this. This is not a board item, but it's important because we have to protect our message. And I'm sure you understand. So thank you. Thank you for, for not having a problem cutting a problem.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Trustees, we'll go on to letter F, food service update, adult meal. And Ms. Riggs, also introduce our new director.
Good evening again. Well, last month was our last month for Mr. Teager, Mr. Chris Teager to work with us. We were very sad to see him go, but we wished him well in his new opportunity. We built an ISD, but we have our new director and he is here today. I'm going to kick you on the spot here. This is Estrick Joseph. He comes to us from California. And so.
A change of weather, sir? Yes, and he finally, I was going to be, uh, get my ear fixed by the point.
We're going to let it slide.
Okay, please. So I'll be brief. I just moved here from California and before California, I was in Afghanistan, Iraq. I've done about fifteen years of university food service. So basically, that's all of it in a nutshell. Welcome to Roston. Thank you.
How's the class living over here?
Class living? Don't tell you to California.
We're going to lose our.
Actually, if we bring them in here, we got the students, right?
You have kids?
Um, no, no, I don't have any. But I'm looking at some, I see.
Okay.
We're excited to have Mr. Joseph join, uh, join us for this year. So the update that I have quickly is just that we're, every year we have to look at adult meal prices. There is a calculator that TDA makes us fill out to see if we're charging enough for adult meals. And after we did the calculation, I even had, um, E S D two take a look at the calculation. We determined that for lunch this year, we were not charging enough. So we're currently charging four dollars and fifteen cents and we are going to have to increase that thirty-five cents. So we're going to start charging adults four fifty for lunch. And for breakfast, again, we were charging, um, two seventy-five and unfortunately, that's not enough. So we're going to have to increase our breakfast prices to three dollars.
No, we're cheating.
I thought, I thought all the teachers ate free, honestly.
Did you all eat?
They deserve it.
You crossed the street.
Sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Trustees, uh, just because we just got our latest updates from, uh, the state as far as our accountability final ratings for two thousand and twenty-two. I'm going to ask Ms. Tagli to come on up and Ms. Almiz. Uh, our principals will be there, uh, with, uh, our, our team. So principals, I'd like for you to just also stand, uh, as we go through the presentation. And, um, and trustees, just know that, that I'm here, here along with our team as well. Although I'm on this side of the dais, we all accept where we are today and where we're going and we'll continue to move forward as a team.
Madam President, Dr. Moreno and Board of Trustees, tonight we want to review the state accountability ratings that have been presented to us. Um, please note that these ratings will be accessible to all our families using, uh, the texas.schools.gov and will also be posted on our district webpage in accordance to Texas Education Code thirty-nine, three, six, one. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Belinda Almiz, our district testing coordinator, and she'll review all of the accountability, um, letter grades and, and review the calculations that contribute to it. She will share the numbers and the grades assigned based on complex calculations mostly derived from one test on one day in one sitting. Unfortunately, the accountability system does not take into effect nor does it calculate the social emotional needs that have been met on each and every one of these campuses. It also does not take it into account or give us any credit for the barriers that our children and our teachers have overcome. We're extremely proud of all of our students and teachers and the commitment to learning and for overcoming extreme adversity these past few years. We continue to have high expectations for all our students, all our teachers, and all our campuses and that expectation that every student should grow each year. Um, we're committed to the work and I want you to know that the work has already begun to help us be in a far better place at the end of next school year. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Almiz.
The dim ring is a little short. Good evening, Board members, Dr. Moreno and of course, behind me is our campus staff. We did receive our final ratings, was it two Friday ago? Two Fridays ago. So, um, everything on this PowerPoint is going to be exactly what we've already received from TA. Um, if you, and I know, like she said, it's complicated numbers and so if y'all have any questions, feel free to ask. But when we look at our accountability, it's not just one domain or one component. We have different components that make up all of our numbers. Um, the first one we have, of course, is our student achievement. Um, our student achievement, of course, is how they performed on the stars, on the star test. But also, uh, we have the high school, we have crossroads that help out our district with, um, they have other components, which is our CCMR, which is our college, college and career military readiness. And then we also look at our graduation rate. So that affects and plays into our student achievement with our high school and with our district overall. And once we look, break down the scores, then you'll be able to see where that plays in. Our second one, um, is the school progress. The school progress measures, um, district and campuses outcomes in two areas. The number of students that grew from at least one year or one academic year that are on track to the following year. So if a student, um, was retained, they don't fall into this progress measure. So it looks at how they scored from last year to, or it would have been in twenty-one to twenty-two to see if they made progress in the areas in their star test. Uh, closing the gaps, uh, closing the gaps uses designated data to demonstrate, um, different, um, different groups. And one of our big groups, of course, that we get rated on is our sociological disadvantaged students and of course, our Hispanic students. So this looks at those students and to make sure that we're, um, meeting their needs and closing their educational gap. Um, the twenty, the twenty-twenty-two accountability system evaluates academic performance of districts' open enrollment charter schools and campuses using three domains. And we just went over this student achievement, the school progress, and closing the gaps. As part of the Senate Bill thirteen sixty-five, all districts and campuses receive a label of A, B, C, or not rated. So if they score below a C, D, or F, then we will just get not rated. Um, any domain, um, or an overall score less than seventy, like I said, you will see the not rated. So on those areas, that's what you'll see, not a literal grade or a score. So we'll start off in looking at the district. So our overall district of Roston ISD, if we look at our student achievement, our scale score was a seventy-six, so we were rated a C. Now, this is where we talked about the college and career, um, well, we call it CCMR, but college, career, military readiness plays in. This is a big part that helps us. This is our students that are taking dual credit. This is our students that participate in the craft training center, the EKG programs.
What else?
The body. So every student that participates in this, they can give us up to a whole additional point, um, to help us in that area. So it really does help that we are a early college district because we have a lot more students that can qualify in this area. And then, of course, our graduation rate was at a ninety-four and on the graduation rate, we can use up to the last three years. Uh, so whatever's the, the better graduation rate is what we plug in there. So like I said, and then we, it takes a better of those scores. So we got a student achievement score of a C. Our school progress was at an eighty-nine, so we got a B-plus on that school progress. And if you look at the bottom, um, the district did not receive an A rating if we had at least one campus that scored below a C in that area. So even if we had a ninety-eight or ninety-five, the highest that we could get is an eighty-nine if we had a, a campus that scored below the C in that, uh, school progress area. Our academic growth overall was, um, and I know when y'all look at what's a component score, a skill score, it's, it's a lot of numbers to figure out. So, um, and that, and TA bases those numbers. So, um, our overall academic score was a sixty-nine. So like I said, it was below the C, so we had a not rated in that area. Our road to performance, our scale score was a ninety, which was an A, so yay, we got an A on that area. Um, so, but what, so and it takes the highs of those two, so that's why we see the eighty-nine with the asterisk. So we could have got, I mean, we had an A, but the highest we could get is an eighty-nine. But hey, we're there. We're at an A on that area. And then our closing the gaps was a seventy-four scale score, so we got a C. So our, our overall district rating is a B. So we are a B. All the hard work from our administration staff, support review, our teachers, our students, we're moving in the right direction. We really, we really are moving in the right direction. So now we're going to break it down. Um, if we look over the years, back in two thousand and eighteen, we were a C. Two thousand and nineteen, we were a B and then COVID hit. So that we were not, nobody was rated. We did tests in two thousand and twenty and then two thousand and twenty-one, of course, because the kids were just getting back into the swing of things, we were also not rated. And then now in two thousand and twenty-two, we're a B campus. So we're going to be moving forward.
Congratulations. Great job.
So we're going to start with San Pedro Elementary. Um, San Pedro Elementary, um, the student achievement score was a fifty-six. So like I said, it was below a C, so it's a not rated. And if you look at the bottom, um, the district did not receive an A rating if we had at least one campus that scored below a C in that area. So, even if we had a ninety-eight or ninety-five, the highest that we could get is an eighty-nine if we had a campus that scored below the C in that, uh, school progress area. Our academic growth overall was, uh... And I know when y'all look at what's a component score, a skill score, it's, it's a lot of numbers to figure out. So, um, and that, and TA bases those numbers. So, um, our overall academic score was a sixty-nine. So, like I said, it was below the C, so we had a not rated in that area. Our relative performance, our scale score was a ninety, which was an A. So, yay, we got an A on that area. Um, so, but what... So, and it takes the highs of those two, so that's why we see the eighty-nine with the asterisk. So, we could have got, I mean, we had an A, but the highest we could get is an eighty-nine. But hey, we're there. We're at an A on that area. And then, our closing the gaps was a seventy-four scale score, so we got a C. So, our overall district rating is a B, so we are a B. We're also proud of all the hard work from our administration staff, support review, our teachers, our students. We're moving in the right direction. We really, we really are moving in the right direction. So, now, we're gonna break it down. Um, if we look over the years, back in twenty eighteen, we were a C. Twenty nineteen, we were a B, and then COVID hit. So, that we were not, nobody was rated. We did tests in twenty twenty, and then twenty twenty-one, of course, 'cause the kids were just getting back into the swing of things, we were also not rated. And then, now, in twenty twenty-two, we're a B campus. So, we're gonna keep moving forward.
Great job.
So, we're gonna start with San Pedro Elementary. Um, San Pedro Elementary, um, the student achievement score was a fifty-six. So, like I said, it was below a C, so it's a not rated. The school progress was a seventy, and they were at a C. Uh, academic growth, that's where they got that C from, the seventy. And then, the relative performance was a fifty-nine, so they took the higher of the two, which was a seventy. Closing the gap was a fifty-nine, so the overall campus rating was sixty-eight. And like I said, we've already started breaking down the data. We've already looked at what kids are affecting us, what things that we need to look for to close that gap, 'cause we were off by three students. Three students. So, and when we say every kid matters, we need to know every kid by name and number. It really is. It really is. So, I mean, they're, you know, three kids away from making, meeting accountability. So, if we look at their overall in twenty eighteen, they were at an F. Twenty nineteen, a D. And then, of course, the two COVID years. And then, again, they'll read a non-rated campus. Lot's Beach Elementary, uh, student achievement was at fifty-four, so not rated. Our school progress was at a sixty-seven, again, not rated. And closing the gap was at sixty-five. Same thing here, we already started looking at the kids, and we were four students away, the growth measure. So, that, right there on that sixty-seven, it was four kids away from meeting. And like I said, we've already, we got the data. We already started, you know, hit the ground running. We're looking at what things that we need to tweak, what things we need to look at, really focus on. So, we're get, we'll get there. Uh, so, in twenty eighteen, they were at an F. Twenty nineteen, a C. And of course, the two years are not rated. And then, twenty twenty-two also is a not rated campus. Robert Driscoll Elementary, student achievement was a sixty-seven, and that wasn't rated. But their school progress was an eighty, which was a B. And closing the gaps was a seventy-one, a C. So, the overall campus rating was a C. So, that is campus, a C campus. And they also got an English arts and reading distinction on that campus. So, that's a good progress. Now, if you look at the bottom to align with the state senate bill, so they are passing campus, they got a C campus. But because they were, well, if we look at that, the not rated, they still have to do some, we'll still have to do some work on them and, um, and an improvement plan. So, if we look at Robert Driscoll overall, twenty eighteen, a B. Twenty nineteen, a C. The two years are not rated, and then twenty twenty-two, a C. So, passing campus.
Ms. Alameiz, can you also mention that, that just made me think about something, but that, um, Lot's Beach, what is the also be, where?
Yes, and at the last slide, we'll go over it. That they got out of the improvement status.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, you're jumping ahead.
It's okay. Um, at Still Junior High, um, of course, their, their student achievement was at fifty-five, so it's not rated. Their school progress was at a sixty-nine, not rated. Their closing the gap was at a seventy-two, a C. So, their overall rating averaged out to a C. So, they are a passing campus. So, if you look at them, twenty eighteen and nineteen, they were D. Um, twenty twenty-two, the two years not rated. And then, twenty twenty-two, they are a C. So, they are, that's a lot of progress, good progress moving forward. Uh, if we look at Crossroads Academy, um, their student achievement was a seventy-eight. And the same thing with Crossroads. It is a secondary campus, so our students there too can participate in the CCMR dual credit. Um, and their graduation rate also plays a big part in this. So, Crossroads is a C campus. And now, that they have a B plus. So, if you look at them in the past, twenty eighteen, an F. Twenty nineteen, a D. And now, they are a passing campus with a, a C. That is a big... All it is, they, they were two kids that literally put them there, and that's amazing. As I said, every kid really counts. And for those kids to accomplish that, that's, that's tremendous on their part.
You know, and I have to go back to say that a part of that is to ensure that our kids, even though they're part of that specific campus, that they chose that the need was there, but they're being integrated to the high school like, like just with all the other children. So, they're becoming part of, of that and really benefiting from our teachers. So, thank you. Definitely the right direction to head.
So, now, we come to the high school, uh, the student achievement. The scale score was a seventy-eight, a C. And like I said, that comes from the average of the three, the STAR performance, the CCMR, and the graduation rate. And the graduation rate, I believe, was from twenty nineteen, and it was a seventy-three, ninety-seven point three. So, student achievement was a C. Uh, the school progress was an eighty-six, so we got a B on the progress. Um, academic growth was a sixty, relative performance an eighty-six. Closing the gap was a seventy-five. So, our overall campus rating was an eighty-three, so that's a B. But, I mean, and there's things that we know that we need to focus on. We need to stay on top of our graduation rate. We need to make sure what kids can also benefit from our CCMR, our readiness programs, you know? The military or whatever, whatever suits their needs. Is that, that's what we need to focus on. We need to find their strength and grow from there.
And they did, yes.
Oh, that's a good one. Gold star in social studies, which is our U.S. history exam. And a couple of years... And a couple of years ago, we would only test our eleventh graders in the U.S. history. And I mean, our kids are really focused, they're growing. And now, we have a lot of our sophomores taking the U.S. history and also the dual credit U.S. history. So, that right there is like our twelfth graders are shining also in helping in, in the score. So, that's our kids growing.
And that was the weight of one teacher. He taught all of social studies. Yeah, and he's his first year doing it. Yeah, first year doing it.
So, that's a, yes.
That was a gold star.
Yes. I know you go, how did I do that? No, he's good. So, he's already wanting to know, what did I do? What do I need to do better?
Those are just what you did. Their instruction, the way he delivered instruction is key.
Yeah. So, that's a big, that's a bonus. So, if we look at the high school, twenty eighteen, a C. Twenty nineteen, a B. And twenty twenty-two, a B campus. So, good job. So, if we look at accountability over the years, and I know it's a new accountability system. Um, so if we look at twenty fourteen to up to twenty eighteen, we were on the old, where we had like the domain one, domain two, domain three. Um, so if we look at it, and then starting in twenty eighteen is when we started our new, um, program. Now, we're going into a new... It's like right when we get it down, we know how to crunch the numbers, and now, we're going into a new STAR two-point-oh. The different...
It's gonna change.
It's a different accountability system. Um, but like I said, it's not gonna be harder. It's gonna be better suited for our students. But we've already, let's go, did our leadership back in, did our leadership camp. You know, we already have people coming in, they're already training us. We need, 'cause we need to know in order for our staff to know, in order for our students to know what we need to do. So, it is gonna change as far as the way the students are tested, but, you know, we'll be ready for it. And, you know, we're already on track. We're getting to know what we need to know. So, um, so our students will be prepared.
And let me add real quick, sort of it, the, the informants here is that our kids already have a year under their belt online.
Yes.
A lot of districts are front-loading CCIC. A lot of them are front-loading the online requirement this year. We front, we did that last year. So, we're going into our second year, we're all, everybody testing online. So, our kids are familiar with it.
Yeah, and I really, I think what we did last year is going all online. It really helped us. And I mean, reaching out. I know, uh, John Fessenden was like, I'm so glad y'all did that. Like, y'all took that chance and did it because we're, we are ahead of a lot of these districts in our area and across the state of Texas. Like, our kids already know how to take a test online, our RPAs, our CFAs. They're all doing it online. So, that just helps and benefits. And so, on the day of the test, they already know what they're doing. So, we're ahead of the game. And we're, like I said, we're still moving forward. Now, going back to what Dr. Moreno was asking. So, um, when we look at a campus and how they're rated, um, and of course, if they're a non-rated, um, campus, then we usually have to do an improvement plan. So, for our high school, they were a B campus, so they are not identified in any kind of improvement plan. So, yay, that's good. A little bit of work. And we still got the work to do, do for them, but not that we have to document and send to TA. Uh, Salazar Crossroads, we still do have to do improvement progress, um, plan for them. We also have to hold a public meeting. We'll have to develop a target improvement, uh, plan and submit it to TA. They are a passing campus, but because in the past, they've been a non-rated, are failing campus. So, they just wanna make sure that whatever we're doing, we're still supporting them to keep them out of that non-rated, um, rating. So, uh, same thing for the junior high. Like I said, they're a C campus, they're passing. But because we have admitted the pass, so then, they will have to do a targeted, uh, support and improvement plan. Same thing, we'll have to hold a public meeting, develop a target improvement plan, and submit this one to TA as well. Uh, Robert Driscoll and Lot's Beach... Well, Robert Driscoll, of course, was a C campus, so they do not have to be identified. Now, at Lot's Beach, because they were a non-rated district, I mean, non-rated campus. But when we're looking at our, um, student progress, we had to meet five out of the eight goals, and they met their numbers. So, that gets them out of that, um, their plan. So, yes, they were a non-rated campus, but, and I wanna say it was the English language area that they passed, that they didn't pass many years before. So, that got us out of that improvement plan. So, Lot's Beach does not need to submit a plan to TA. So, that's, we're doing this.
Yes, we're still, we still have plans in place.
Yes, but we are. I mean, just 'cause we don't have to submit it to TA, 'cause we still wanna keep our campuses, the ones where they're at and the other ones keep moving forward. So, of course, we always look at data, we're always making a plan to see how we can improve things, and we want everybody passing. Um, so, same thing as San Pedro. Um, they're a non-rated campus, so they will have to do a targets, target support and improvement plan. Same thing, hold a public meeting, develop a targeted improvement plan, and submit it to TA. So, but I know, but at least we're not ha... I mean, we have three campuses here to where in the past, we've had to submit a district one, we had more campuses. So, it's a good thing. We really, we can see the work in our staff, our teachers, and our students. So, Rockstown is the place to be. A good beginning.
Yes.
And so, we did talk about it, um, our accountability changing again. That's why we're like charting the course. It's like we say, oh, we got it down, we know how to do the numbers. And it's in, like I said, it's a new accountability system. It's a new redesign. And I don't know if y'all have even heard about it, but just to kind of touch base, 'cause our kids have always been used to paper, pencil, A, B, C, or D. Now, with the new STAR two-point-oh, it's completely online. That's why we're saying we're ahead of the game. Our kids already know how to test online 'cause online, our paper testing is not gonna be a choice anymore. And that comes from TA. It's gonna be far fewer in between. That TA will approve a paper test. So, our students are already that head of the game. Um, but it's gonna be more like open-ended. It's gonna be drag and drop. They're gonna have maps, and the kids are gonna have to point. So, it's gonna be more interaction for our students. You know, it's not no more, oh, let me guess, let me circle B, 'cause they're gonna have to actually be involved in the test and, you know, drag and drop and, you know, move things around on the test. So, is it, once we get a little more direction, you know, and if y'all would like, then we can present to you just so y'all can see what our students are gonna have to be, um, tested on. It's the same curriculum, the same TEES, it's just a new style of testing.
Is that something like you, eventually, you can bring it to us? That's something that you can bring to like maybe a, like a family night or...
So, we've already started looking at that and started looking at how the, you know, teaching the parents and showing the parents what the kids are gonna have to be doing too. So, yes, if y'all would like to see something like that, then...
We started building tests today. So, just taking what the old tests look like and then how those questions would look like in the new format. And so, just to show the consistency that, um, the skill that's being assessed is the same. What we want and expect our students to know and master is the same. It's just a different format of them expressing it. In our opinion, after having a training and fully understanding it, we think it's gonna be better. Um, and so, like the next slide, we'll talk about, you know, our main, um, our strategic path. We want, sorry. Um, we, of course, new test, new accountability system. We definitely need to fully understand it so that we can serve our population, both our teachers and our students. And so, we have front-loaded, uh, our year with a lot of top-notch, um, professional development. Before, it's the leader in the industry. Um, they're so great at accountability that even TA, after so many years of them not being affiliated, are now affiliated with John Fessenden and the Accountability Connect. So, we have all our trainings, some of which we've already done. That's why we feel pretty confident in building tests and helping our students and our parents understand what's gonna be expected of our students. We also, um, we believe that practice is key. Practice makes perfect, uh, increasing the opportunities for students to think critically, write critically, and speak critically. Because if they can do those three things, they can drag and drop. They can, they can highlight the sections that are referring, uh, to a specific question. Um, we also believe that increasing their opportunity to, to test in the platform, to test online and things like that. Um, and also, increasing opportunities for teachers to participate in lesson rehearsals. And that's, if you struggle teaching a specific skill, then being able to practice with your colleagues in a PLC on how to teach it and give each other feedback to perfect it before it goes before our students. Um, and then also, just fully understanding data desegregation so we know who and what and how to assist. And then also, increasing presence. And I love, the high school is already doing this. They're in their mobile offices. They're all, they're not in their offices. They are in the hallways, in classrooms. And so, our challenge this year is gonna be, uh, to challenge our administrators to be in every classroom every day. It could be three seconds, three minutes, thirty minutes, but every classroom every day. And as a district team, we're also gonna challenge ourselves to be in every classroom at least every week. And so, it'll be fun too, for students to see us. And when, when there's presence there, instruction increases, behavior decreases, and then accountability will take care of itself. That's where we are. That's our plan.
Thank you. Thank you, team.
And they did.
She's honest.
Tristan, would anyone like to say? Would anyone like to say anything?
I just wanna commend you guys, I mean, because it really does take a village. You know, we're up here, you know, technically.
We do the easy stuff compared to what you do every day.
Y'all are in the trenches. Y'all, y'all really do represent us. So, um, you know, we're here to support you guys in every way possible. Just thank y'all for all the hard work that you do. It doesn't go unnoticed. Um, and, you know, this right here just shows that, that the hard work pays off. So, thank y'all so much. I've only been here, you know, going on two years, but to see the growth from the past to now, it really does show that, that the work that y'all are putting in really does make a difference. So, thank y'all so much.
Yours is awesome. And Belinda, of course, you know, y'all did an awesome job. Thank you for moving us again, and we look forward to greater things.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Pretty much COVID, so...
I'm out a few words.
I just, I just wanna, I just wanna say something to the, to the principals that are a non-rating, a non-rating campus. There's nothing to be ashamed about. We're a family. We're gonna build each other up, and it, it's... You did the most important thing. You didn't give up, and you came back. So, thank you for that. I wanna thank, that, this is how important our teachers are, guys. It's our teachers, and we're here for our kids. And I'm not gonna cry, but, um, honestly, thank you. Thank you. I'm very proud of the principals that are here. Thank you.
I also would like to say thank you, trustees, for always being so supportive of our team. I can assure you, I can guarantee you that, uh, no one in, in this room, uh, takes a step back when it comes to our kids. So, it's now continued to unify and continue to, to set a very, uh, high target, the, the very strategic target that, uh, we will continue to move forward, and we will attain that A. We will.
We will.
That is.
We will.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to add to it, you know, what they said, Well, I just wanted to add to it, you know, what they said, because, you know, with all the accomplishments that, you know, Dr. Moreno, the superintendent of the year, we're very fortunate to be board of the year, but that also reflects on what the district does. What the district does, y'all's number really does put us with, with those accolades that we just received, so. Thank you all again, um, can't express our, my gratitude to you guys, so thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, trustees, we're going to go on to letter G, principals, I promise I'll let you go a little bit more, okay? Okay, trustee, so you also have just your September updates that are, uh, it's one of the sheet, oh, the brief sheet. Just to try to keep you, uh, on top of just things that are coming, eventually coming up, so you'll have that for your review. Uh, I do want the principals here, just in case, if any questions from our, our board trustees. Uh, we do, uh, under, uh, our update on safety and security updates. Uh, to begin, I'd like to, to formally introduce Mr. Tagley, who's back over there, come on over, Mr. Tagley. And, uh, you know, Mr. Tagley, he is a community member, he was on the, actually, police force here for twenty-two years. Just give our trustees a brief little, uh, description of your background.
I worked, uh, with Rockson twenty years, uh, sergeant, patrol sergeant, narcotics sergeant, RCD lieutenant, until I retired in April. And then y'all hired me, so I hope that opportunity.
And now you're in a better place.
Thanks, uh, take full, you know, just well done, the opportunity y'all gave me to protect our kids and staff, so.
Yeah, so, I, he comes with a, with a big vision, and, uh, really, uh, a sense, a sense of professionalism that I think that's really going to be a great polish as, as he continues working with all of our schools. Um, I've given him already a couple of tasks, and I'm not even worried about it, I mean, he's just running, you know, and that's what we want, someone in that type of position. Uh, so we appreciate that, and he, and I'll say jokingly, but at the same time, we were working through a, a specific situation a few days ago, and, uh, luckily, and we had somebody with his level of experience who went out there, I gave him some direction, he just took care of it. I mean, it's just, and that's what we're going to need to be able to, better support to keep our saves, our kids safe, and our families, uh, here with us, so thank you.
And he has a great support system, sir. There she is. Thank you, thank you for giving up your night for us. Did y'all eat? Because they did. Welcome, sir, welcome.
A few other updates, uh, we do have a, uh, a really big task, uh, ahead of us, and that's what Mr. Tagley's been helping, uh, us out with. Is our, our TA audit, which is coming up, we have some deadlines coming up, and that's, that's part of his, his initial, uh, project that he's working on. Uh, but within that, it's included, uh, one of the, the main things that we're doing is door sweeps. Uh, in our district, we do them daily, we report weekly, we've gotten even more innovative, now we, uh, really, all of our doors now are going to be able to be scanned. That way, we're not just getting papers that we're going to be turning to the state, it's just going to be electronic, we'll download reports, we'll be ready to go, but that's what everyone's input. Um, today, I'm really excited that we started our initial phase one, um, at Driscoll, so all the foyer and our key doors, uh, that are going to have um, some entry points with a, a swipe, and, and there'll be, in, in front of you trustees, all of you have the campus maps. So we've, at this point, numbered all of the, the, uh, main doors in all of our schools, high school's the last one, we're, uh, about to start numbering there as well. But you'll notice on these maps, you're going to have entry points, so the whole goal within the entry points on these initiatives is that we identify and reduce, high school alone has over sixty-six doors. And the design of the building forces our kids to walk outside. So what happens there is that even though we have sixty-six doors, strategically, we have to reduce that amount so that we know where our entry points are, are coming in, but also, our main interest is going to be, you have a swipe, our main foyer's in all the schools. Elementarys and up to the high school are going to be the same concept, so. Now, when someone comes to the, our door, uh, one of our customers, one of our parents, or anyone who's, who's coming in, uh, they have to, after school begins, it's a two-way communication with a buzzer, but it's also a two-way video. That way, our receptionist will be able to know who's coming into our building at that point, he or she will be able to buzz them in, and then at that point, even have to be buzzed into the office door, so. Exactly, so, and then when they get to the foyer, then all of those doors will be secured. Right now, you get in, but then you still, you have the open doors, well, all of those are also going to be secured, and Richard's been instrumental in really helping us get this going, so thank you, Richard. And trustees, for the last quarter, you, uh, helped us settle some approval of these items, and we'll be coming to you for some more approval. So phase one, Driscoll started today. Uh, Driscoll started today, and then we're going to finish up this weekend and next week with, uh, San Pedro and Lotz Beach, uh, and Hattie Martin. And then, uh, phase two started September first, in that window, Richard's already on it to get the scheduling done for that, and that'll be our heat budget cycle as well. We'll start, uh, working on, uh, SEAL, the high school, I believe that, uh, here, the central office, athletics, as well as the band area. So again, the, the swipe system is going to be critical, because not only that, if Jose Moreno swipes in, guess what, it's being logged. What time, who's coming in, and what time he's coming in, uh, and that's going to be important also, as part of our, our safety and security measures that we have. Uh, so again, the bit that we're reinforcing is this is a district-wide initiative, this is not just one campus. As far as doors, we have specific doors that are expected to walk in, expected to walk out, and that's all for the safety of our kids and our staff. Uh, so that'll be a place, trustees, for you to review as well.
I have a question.
I'm going to put on the spot, just to fill out the media with the campus, Miss Chaueta, the, um, that door that, as you're walking in, to the right, right before the front office, to the right, it's like, I guess, I don't know, it's to your lounge area? Are, are the teacher, is that going to be locked, and they're going to go in through the back? So they're not, no longer going to, I mean, I'm just saying for, you know, because I, I, I used to do it, walk from the office out.
Yeah, it's been locked.
Okay, so they'll just be going through the office area to get to, I, I don't know, is there a lounge area still?
It's a lounge, uh-huh, so they can come through the office area, but I think that one's going to also have a key card.
Just so that they won't be in the foyer, you know, it's not.
Yeah, it'll be basically a vestibule, because they'll have the, the, the mirror, just the flat room from.
Yeah, that's the glass door.
Those will have the lock, and then two different offices, and then the, uh, two-way in the front, so it'll all be a big area that parents may get through, or anybody.
But your, your, your staff is, your staff is not going to do that foyer area?
And don't, don't forget, trustees, we've also progressively, the past few years too, Richard's been instrumental in that part of it, is all of our camera systems, I mean, I would say, even maybe, I want to take a guess, ninety percent of them are all high-def. So we've been updating those throughout the years, so all that, now, even our police officers, and, and again, I, I applaud our, our local first responders as close as they want to work. Even like, what was it, on Friday, out of nowhere, it's got a call, Dr. Moreno, is there anything we can do for you, anything you need from us? It's just like out of nowhere, I, I thought something was going on, but that's the type of, uh, relationship we're building with our local first responders, and I say first responders, police department, fire department, EMS, our, our constables, everybody's on board, uh, with our team to help us out in our schools. Uh, so they even have an IP address to where they'll be able to, uh, on specific, uh, instruments, be able to, uh, if we say, hey, something's going on at Driscoll Elementary, they go on, online, they can see our internal cameras. But that'll be regulated, of course, but we'll be able to work that, that quickly with them, as well as what they're doing with Raptor with us. So we're, we're excited about the direction that we're heading.
Sir, I know this is a change, and people are resistant to change. Do you have any complaints, like, is everyone being cooperative, all of our staff? Because I know it's going to be a hassle for some to walk along, and we just have to protect, I, I know it's going to be inconvenient.
I think, I think that that begins with me as well, as, as a superintendent, is that if I'm expected to walk in a certain door, and I'm expected to check in every day, that's the expectation everyone has, so we're going to do what we need to do to continue to reinforce, uh, our systems.
Sir, on Picker Lane, we still have the issue with those doors, or those doors, the gates being, the gates, I mean.
That's how the, the gates?
On Picker Lane. Um, are they, are they not?
I wasn't aware that they were open, they've been locked. The only people that can go in through Picker Lane are our, uh,
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria people. So if it stays open, we look to our cafeteria, you know, manager, Mr. Teeter.
So, is, uh, are lots have been changed now?
The locks are all changed, yes ma'am. Uh-huh, the, uh, Dr. Moreno and I did that before the end of, uh, last school year, we changed, uh, all the parameters, we changed it to one key, and we were very strategic on who gets the keys, even with our coaches, only the, uh, the head coaches have a key into the gate. You know, assistant coaches have them, uh, you know, Mr. Cabaneda has a key, uh, to the parameter, but pretty much, we, we kept it really, um, tight.
Because we have the kids parking in the parking lot still, you know, by there all the time.
Yes, and they do, and those are kids that do not have a license or do not have insurance. The parents allow them.
Don't look at me, Erasmus out there.
No, you know, and the kids that do have it, do park where they're supposed to, but.
So where, where do they come in?
They come in through the front, they have to come in through the front.
They have to walk all the way around?
Yes.
And, and one of the things, trustees, is part of our plan of action too, is that, and again, we appreciate your support on this, but we still have, uh, two more security monitors that are, uh, within the, the budgeted amounts, we also have an additional security monitor at SEAL. Um, so it's just a matter of them finding the candidates, I mean, we've had several, I mean, I, I have the notes here from earlier, how many we had, uh, but we have to look at specific criteria each and one, and make sure that they qualify for positions as well. So again, uh, Mr. Tagley also is going to help us out to see if he has any, you know, just in his connection, uh, anyone who's just going to come in and serve as a security monitors for our schools as well.
So the gates are open in the morning for drop-off for Picker Lane, and on Avenue J or Highway forty-four, but the one, the gates on Highway forty-four are shut at seven forty, because my band starts practicing. But Picker Lane stays open till fifteen, eight fifteen, and then they're closed, so.
As far as the cafeteria men, would that be Mr. Joseph that would have the key only?
Yes, and the manager.
So trustees, if you hear some, some, uh, concerns out there because of limited keys, we got to get control of our keys. So I'm, I'm limiting as far as who's getting keys, additional keys, and.
But everybody, and either my maintenance workers know that they come around, you know, they go, everybody goes through the Bosques entrance.
It has to be a team effort, it just has to at this point.
You know, a technology, Richard, and, you know, Brandon, they go through Bosques Street, or, you know, nobody goes through Picker Lane unless you are a cafeteria worker.
You have to go through Red.
Sure, as we know, some Bosques, yes, and then you get to get through Red, yeah. But our kids have been great, really good, you know, about following, you know, and, and making sure doors are shut, and stuff like that.
And we got some, uh, some kids, students climbing over the fence.
Oh, yeah.
I witnessed it myself. I saw these kids coming down the parking lot, and they jumped over. I'm like, oh my god.
Sir, sir, um, speaking of security, are we short security, are our power needs to create, are there, do we need right now?
Well.
Well, we've always had two, Ms. Garza, we've always had two, but because through Ester and the safety, uh, and they should have, uh, Dr. Moreno, and has allowed us to hire two more safety monitors, which is awesome, you know, uh, but we just haven't, yeah, find them.
So that would be three on campus, four, well, one at the gate, but three roaming.
And, you know, we have identified sections that we would like them to be in constantly.
So we are hiring two more, we just don't have candidates?
No, and we did have, when we met with the first responders and stuff, I usually, you know, we, Mr., I mean, Dr. Moreno and I even told them, you know, you know anybody that's retired, that's, that's a little bit of their income, that's been on the force, or maybe, you know, um, has that kind of experience, and along with.
Maybe Bertha will volunteer, don't you think? She'll stop and whip.
She's already doing it.
She's at work, but she could volunteer.
But yeah.
And you said one more at the junior high, sir?
Yes.
So that would be two, Miss Chaueta, I'm sorry, two on the campus?
We have one security guard and one, one, two.
And then we'll go from there.
So this one plus one you have now would be two, or would it be three?
So it's, because it's a security guard and then there's a safety one, two total.
Two total, okay.
So is one at the gate company?
We don't have, but remember, my campus is enclosed like the elementary. So there's just, that's why I have just those two, the front entrance and the back, that's the only way to get into the door.
And that'd be all access, access.
And we have cameras pointed, so there's, um, our receptionist has the screens, and then our APs, when they're in their offices, they have screens as well, and we have the cameras.
I could see the logic on why you have two, but what about in your campus, because you kind of have a big campus too, what about fights? What about fights, like, would you need more for fight, like, wh- wh- who's responsible for fights, sir?
Anybody's fully duty, I, at our campus, Ms. Garza, we have about ten people that are out there doing lunch duty, and they range from perps to security guards to administration.
Okay.
So.
Do you want to say we haven't had a fight at all this year?
I know that's tough, I know that's tough.
We, we had one, and, and, uh, but you know, just the response time, you know, is, is amazing, you know, we, we know what to look for. So these cameras go, go up, we're looking, you know, um, you know, so it's just communication, you know, we have three hundred plus kids at lunch at any given time, you know, so.
And they'll always, if, if, they should say, passing period, teachers outside the door.
Yes.
They, they, they were to stop a fight, you know, you know, most of them, what is it, CPI trained? It would be the security, you know, CPI trained, and the, the actual teamwork.
And I think what helps also is on Raptor, we have the team assist justified, so if somebody were to hit the team assist, you'll alert the, uh, the, uh, the people that are part of the CPI.
Wow, so did, did you do that for this fight, did that happen this?
No.
Well, she had, there, she had two, four, uh, five, six, about seven, seven to eight, uh, people already at, and that's every day.
But nobody pushed the Raptor button, or?
No, it just happened, yeah, it just happened, and we just.
And those, and those are within that CPI.
And it just happened, everybody that we had learned, we were out there.
We were already out there.
Yeah, we were out there.
And then, you know, we at Southern had been really consistent in going over this, is how we walk in the hall, like, we chickened down to elementary. Okay, we're going to walk, we're going to watch everybody, this is how we need to walk, by two, against the wall. So we're really trying to train them this year to make sure that the passing period, because that's where we, we always have a hot fought, with the passing period. Um, and then of course, being vigilant, we talked to teachers about being at the door, so that you can see the kids that are leaving and the kids that are coming in.
Yeah.
Um, I think, it also has helped that we have almost all our vacancies filled, because everybody's, there's.
Good.
We really moved some classrooms, so we have the areas that are empty, we just blocked it up, we put stop sign, we put no classes over there, so everybody's compacted, so there's always somebody at the door.
And I think our mobile desk, I think the administrators having their mobile desk out in the hallways is so beneficial, you know, I mean, um, the fight happened during lunch, you know, with three hundred kids out there, but for the most part, you know, what happens during instructional setting, there's too many people, too many people out in the halls, we're out in the halls, so it really.
It's serious.
Yes, I just don't know how we can stop it, I, I thought, because you know, we don't want anybody to get hurt, staff or, or student, nobody, we, none of us do, I just, I don't know how to stop that.
It's just, it, there's so many variables, you know, and it's just, I think we're on the right track, you know, of having our restorative practices, you know, our restorative circles, you know, and continuing to try to, you know, find a place for kids to belong.
But I think, I think a lot of that comes also, they're already mad from home, social media, they come over here, and that's, they see where they see each other.
Yeah, but already the things we have, we are not controlled, we have to look at what we can control and what we can't control. You know, we can control the remediation, we can control the restorative, and what we do, and letting them know that they matter, you know, and continue to, to be that, you know, for them, but there's a lot of instances that we don't have control over, you know, home life situations and stuff.
And he can tell you about talking with our kids about, I, like, you know, we brought out the sixth graders the other day, and we sensed, you know, you could feel it, when you work long enough, you like something, and the teacher struck, there's something, and so we thought maybe something was happening, we run all out. We went over the code of conduct, so it's going to happen, uh, if you do this.
I love that.
This is not, um, and so we kind of reset that, and then, um, I told, you know, especially our sixth graders, I'm going to ask you, if you choose to use your, 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 you know, physical, what were all the opportunities that you had before it became that? Because you had your first period teacher you could have told, your second period, you had my voice, you had counselors in the hallways, you had a custodian where you could have taken a step before it led to the physical, so we kind of put it back on them.
And making that feel, that back they belong is important, the reason I said, when I said about the non-rated campuses, because I saw their disappointment, and we're adults, and we're, we're hard on ourselves, and can you imagine our kids? It's terrible, it's terrible. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to guys to put you, but I love you guys, and there's nothing to mention.
I just got to ask, does, does, do y'all have any fights, elementary?
They're at sixth grade.
We sit in the kitchen.
You do, Mr. Simon, you do?
Last year, there was, uh, there was something going around with, uh, they were trying to film fights in the bathroom. So we had to, uh, take action with that, and.
I hate TikTok.
But it was more of just like girls, like, going like that, it wasn't like, you know, full-on.
It was play fighting, like, they wanted to be on camera, sort of thing.
Yes.
There's a bunch of challenges going on right now, TikTok.
And they're, so, but, you know, they're trying to simulate, you know, it's hard for freshmen to come into a campus, you know, and, and they're trying to find their way, and unfortunately, you know, they have to make some bad decisions.
I thought it was a hassle, I texted him, he didn't respond, I was mad at him, he's like, Mom, you told me not to be on the phone in class. I, I couldn't be better.
No, no, you know, we have to make some kids, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we have, we're trying to have seven hundred fifteen kids interact, you know, throughout the day, and, you know, we, we, we're old enough to be good at the door, but we just have to train them.
Yeah, I, I would have to say, trustees, and it's, it's interesting, I mean, everyone said the same thing, it, this year's just different, that first week was like, just smooth, kids were just getting the class, it's just, yeah, it definitely is.
You matter, sir.
Everyone matters, everyone matters.
Mr. Emilio, and just, just a heads up, uh, I, I think it's still going to happen, I don't know, I haven't heard, uh, otherwise, in October, they're supposed to start that, that ditch repair, right there on Bosques, is it Bosques? So they're supposed to cover that ditch, it's going to start in October, so, I, I don't, I think we can use one entrance at a time, you know, uh, work on that entrance, we're going to have to go to the other.
Oh, the back, we need the back.
One of the commissioners had mentioned that they were going to start, you know, October.
Well, we have another security shed that was made on the premises, so we can, it's not like we don't have another building, we can always get another.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, y'all are good. Thank you.
Um, would they wait? I'm sorry, I should have, I should have. Okay, sir, uh, governance?
Uh, trustees, uh, what we have, we've already done the first reading, so these are the new policies that give that government page, discussing consider approval of update one nineteen affecting the following local board policies. CPC, DMA, EHAA, EHB, EHBA, EHBB, EIF, FFBA, and FFH.
This is second reading, correct?
Second reading.
Make a motion to approve, um, governance, item A, as read by Dr. Moreno.
Trustees, I have a first and a second by Sessa and Bobby, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Next item, business of support.
Trustees, as, and as requested from the last board meeting, so in your package you will find the details of the, uh, we're requesting on letter A and B. So on letter A, discussing consider approval of purchase orders exceeding fifty thousand for curriculum, and again, your, uh, your packets do indicate the items that, that we're requesting there.
This was already presented as well.
Uh, this was, uh.
This was not presented yet?
This is a new one.
No, this is a new one.
Trustees, the request, uh, for the first item is for the purchase of Eureka Math. It will impact, uh, kindergarten through fifth grade. Now, this is a purchase that will be completely one hundred percent covered through our T-class funding. And so it is not any, um, direct impact to our fiscal, um, our budget, um, and it does impact K five. Currently, what we're doing, since we needed approval to make such a big purchase, is we're printing the materials for our teachers and our students until the purchase, uh, if, if the purchase gets approved. Um, so in the meantime, our students have not been without the curriculum, but it is, um, much easier to purchase the materials already printed, um, just, yes, yes.
And it's Eureka, you said?
That is Eureka Math, and it is a TEA vetted, uh, curriculum, and, uh, this is, this district's second year, last year was a pilot year, and so we did not have to incur any costs. Now, again, the costs that are being incurred this year will be covered through T-class grant funds. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a first by Mr. Rodan and a second by Mr. Martinez, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, sir?
Trustees, would like to discuss and consider approval of purchase orders exceeding fifty thousand for software.
So, uh, the software being, uh, recommended for purchase is Imagine Learning, there are two separate quotes, the first quote, um, is for, uh, the Ingenuity Platform through Imagine Learning. Our students at the high school utilize this program heavily for credit recovery, and, um, so does, uh, our Salasars Crossroads Academy. Um, the second quote for Imagine Learning, um, is, will cover Imagine Math, which is primarily used for elementary and middle school students. It is a, um, research-based intervention program, computer-based, for, um, our students to help them cover any instructional gaps in math.
Is that also covered by your grant?
This, yes, thank you. Um, this actually will be paid for, um, out of the instructional materials allotment, so will not have an impact to the local budget.
I will, I will, they'll get approved.
I'll second.
I have a first by Mr. Rodan and a second by Mr. Martinez, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Prasang.
Thank you, Ms. Prasang.
Item, I'm sorry, sir, next item?
Trustees, would like to discuss and consider, uh, discuss and consider and take possible action to approve the rankings of proposals for contractor services for the Van Hall Restrooms renovation project, including possible delegation of authority to negotiate and execute the contract. So trustees, what you've approved for me before is a competitive seal proposal, the CSP, uh, and remember, CSP is based on best value. Not always the least expensive, it's about what the value of the whole project as a whole, although, uh, the least expensive also is, is got a variable in the rubric that we utilize. Now, again, and I'd like to apologize to Mr. Navah, uh, he's our architect, worked on this project, I know it's been a late night, uh, and you can see, there's a lot, lot to cover. Uh, but he's been also working with us closely on this project, and Ms. Riggs, uh, now trustees, what you have in front of you, this document here, that we want to show you transparently. Um, this is the ratings that, that we, uh, utilize, the tabulations that we utilize on this, you're gonna notice a five-point difference, everything is the same between these companies that Ms. Riggs is gonna talk about. Two that turn into proposals, everything's the same based on the qualifications, but what you end up finding a difference on where you see that one hundred and that ninety-five. Then at that point, because everything else was an equal, is the price. So, what I would do after, we have this discussion tonight, trustees, is if you give me the authority, then I have the authority at that, at that point, to pursue, uh, any type of negotiation and then also completion of, and executing the contract. Ms. Riggs?
So I just wanted to start very briefly with how we started this process, at the end of March, Dr. Moreno, um, picked the architect, uh, for this project. So at the end of March, I formally requested from our attorneys to give us the AIA contracts so that we could submit to Mr. Navah. Uh, we received those at the beginning of April, but we had, the attorneys had some, uh, questions and other, needed other items, um, submitted to them in order to complete those AIA contracts. We finally got those contracts back around, um, April sixth, around there, and we sent it to Mr. Navah. Toward the latter part of April, we got some questions back from Mr. Navah, we were able to work through those and we executed the contract on May ninth. Um, on July eleventh, Mr. Navah, Dr. Moreno and I met, uh, uh, Mr. Navah informed us that we were very close to, uh, getting the engineering reports ready so that we could submit the CSP. In the meantime, we came to the board and asked how we should procure, uh, these services. And so we met and on July twenty-eighth, we issued the competitor's seal proposal. Uh, we, we, uh, advertised it on the Caller Times on July twenty-eighth, August, and August fourth, as required, for two weeks. Proposals were due on August eleventh. Now, we did have a pre-bid meeting on August fourth, where we allowed any vendor who was interested in submitting a proposal to come and learn more about the project and actually go visit the bathrooms. At that time, we did have five different companies who came to visit the facilities. And at the end of the, uh, due date, on that day, August eleventh, we received two proposals, one was from Barcom and the other was from South Texas Building Partners, and as Dr. Moreno has stated, you have the scoring rubric in front of you. Now, uh, it totals a hundred points, we looked at relevant, relevant experience, project management, past performance, you know, the types of, of subcontractors and their capability, and of course, their price. Everything really was equal between the two companies, except for the monetary proposal. There was a twenty-three thousand dollar, twenty-three thousand six hundred dollar difference between the top, um, the top, uh, the highest price and the lowest price. Um, as Dr. Moreno stated, it just so happened that we felt that the best value, uh, was with, um, the lowest price. Now, I'm going to be honest, we had a budget set up for this project of ninety-five thousand dollars and this project, they've come up, um, over double that amount. And so what we're asking today is that you approve our rankings as Barcom being our first ranked, um, uh, first ranked proposer. And so we're asking that you allow him to negotiate with them and then execute a contract.
Ms. Riggs, how, how did it double?
How did it double?
Why did it double?
I think, uh, at this point, Mr. Navah, uh, our, our architect working on it, he, uh, gave us what he's projected based on, on the price point.
Right. Okay, trustees, I don't know. Uh, I think initially we started talking earlier than, uh, the initial dates, I think we started talking late, uh, twenty twenty-one, I believe, as far as just working on projects. Uh, so we looked at, uh, history, historical numbers that we have in our office in terms of the cost of work. Uh, I think right now, the construction industry is, is kind of in a difficult situation where, uh, they see escalating prices and obviously now there's inflation, that everybody's, we're, uh, on this particular project, with these two restrooms, uh, we've not reached out to any of the contractors directly because we didn't want to skew any conversations that may carry on after contracting or just discussions. But, uh, I'm thinking that the plumbing cost, uh, has, was, is significantly higher than anticipated. Uh, and possibly, you know, we're seeing the increase in labor and possibly conservative pricing. Uh, right now, the feedback we get from contractors and subcontractors is that as they price things, uh, the prices that are quoted to them are not really, uh, hard numbers, uh, they're really budget numbers unfortunately, and then they get into, uh, what's the construction industry is seeing is the supply chain. Uh, the difficulty of getting materials and then the prices not being held, either suppliers, manufacturers. So there's some variable factors that are unfortunately playing into any, any kind of project right now.
Let me be asking this, you mentioned the plumbing, and how so is it so much more expensive on the plumbing? I would figure the electrical part, yes, but the plumbing? Uh, I don't know how it would not come out.
Uh, I'm not really sure myself, uh, I've not reached out to any subcontractors directly at this point, that's something we'll, we'll investigate. Uh, that is a big portion of this renovation is the plumbing, uh, because it's, we're moving from where it is to a different location to get the larger restaurants. Electrically, it, it is not a complicated project, overall, it's not a complicated project, it's, it's fairly straightforward, uh, so, you know, that has us puzzled.
The reason I mentioned the electrical is because electrical is a lot more higher than the plumbing parts.
I have a question, what, did we get a quote, just a, a one-liner? Is it just a one-liner quote or is it a detailed quote? Like, out of the two twenty-one, ten thousand is?
They provided a base split price.
Are we gonna get an AIA form, some detail?
Absolutely, and so that's part of where I will work through negotiations, so just like we did with the welding lab, I don't know if y'all recall trustees, we required that they gave us an itemized, uh, area and that gave us all, that gave me then the negotiating power to say, these are areas that we want to target to be able to try to value engineer or whatever we need to do at that point. I don't see that there's gonna be as much flexibility as a welding lab, I mean, that's a much bigger project, but there's definitely gonna be room for some negotiations.
Did you find out, Mr. Navah, that we do have a cutoff valve, like at the Van Hall?
Uh, don't, no, yes.
I would think that we would have to, because it's an independent building.
I'm assuming it does.
Did you see in your review, a cutoff valve to just shut that, that whole area off?
Just, just a Van Hall, because we don't want to shut the water to the, to the schools.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think there's.
Yes, there, there is a.
There's a big one.
Water valve, it's not meter, it's a valve.
Yeah.
Ms. Rodan, another question?
I have a question for, for, um, Ms. Riggs. We're talking, we're looking at ninety-five thousand, look at the money wise, uh, ninety-five thousand, you double it and that's, you know, ninety thousand, are we getting that from where, the general fund, Ester fund, where are we getting that from?
So this project is initially budgeted out of the, out of Ester three, and so if any increase in price, we would have to go back and look at our Ester three expenditures and possibly defund other items that we may have funded.
Because that money's already been allocated technically with that ninety-five thousand, but if we're not able to, like, for the financing strategically, would that come out of our general fund?
There's no other place to get it from?
Yeah.
Correct, I think there's very minimal in our, um, in our building fund, I think it's five thousand or less, we can look there, um, but other than that, we would be looking at our general.
What happened to our five hundred dollars we had allocated for our building over here at the?
Parking lot?
They are still committed.
Not the park, well, the parking lot, basically, the, you know, those five hundred dollars.
They, they are still committed for the parking lot.
They're still committed, okay.
But it's still in the general fund, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Like we said, so it's still, it's still there, we still have to remove it.
No, you can, yes.
You can, we, we can get it, we can.
Like the number that you tell us that we have in our general fund, that five hundred thousand's in that number?
Yes.
But it's committed to the.
Yes.
Yes.
To the parking lot, or the, or the immuno building to, remember, we're gonna re-cover, we're gonna cover the, to the bus line, that's what that was committed for.
Well, but the concrete alone now is like.
It's gonna be five hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand some right now.
So, do that, you're telling, we're not gonna do it?
Now, right now, that's not the biggest priority.
Yeah, but actually, you're asking about that.
I'm asking about money.
Yes, because, because of the fact.
I know, I know that they're, I mean, inflation's real, we all know that, I mean, I know that from work, I just, that's a lot of money.
It's a lot.
If we, i- if we approve this budget, Moreno, are we committed to the work or is this just approving you authorization to negotiate?
To move forward, negotiate and sign the contract.
This is not.
That's that number.
This is, right, this is not us give, doing the project right now.
No, no, I'm negotiating.
It's gonna come back to us again?
Yes.
Absolutely. But the project is in progress, isn't it?
No.
No?
No.
Nothing been done to the restaurant?
No, we're, we're down to the two companies, they're the ones that, they had the proposal, now it's gonna be about negotiations, that we can start, you know, deciding on one specifically. Well, the one we're gonna go with initially is gonna be Barcom because of the, I mean, again, you notice all the areas and they have the best price.
What about the others who wish to?
Only two, only two.
They didn't submit.
They didn't submit.
They came to do the walkthrough, but didn't submit.
Oh, exactly, and we had them on the scoring sheet because we anticipated on that day that they were gonna submit a proposal and then we did it, so.
I can understand like a fifty percent increase, but this is a hundred and twenty percent increase. That is a lot, that's, that's shocking.
Just to add one bathroom, that's what we're doing here?
Two.
No.
Or it's two, but I think there's like three stalls.
I mean, they need it, the Van Hall absolutely needs it.
And, and I get it, I mean, it's concrete, you're gonna have to go through concrete to reroute the plumbing and stuff like that.
But you will look at all the details, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Every single line.
And, and you'll be one of four, trustees, I mean, before we decide the final dotted line, I get, what you're giving me authorization on is to move forward. Decide an initial, and please correct me on this one, initial contract to start to negotiate.
So the off, the authority that with this line item says that Dr. Moreno can negotiate it and if he comes to an, an agreement or a number that he feels is, uh, fair, he can go ahead and execute that contract without having to bring it to the board.
That's what I understood, that, that's what I understood.
Because you've already delegated that authority to him.
Prior.
But a board, you wouldn't.
But you wouldn't do that, I mean, you, I understand you have that authority, but I wouldn't like to.
I would like to bring the numbers, that way everyone's on the same page before we go there.
Perfect.
Okay, that, that, that's understanding, I was under that impression as well, that he had already prior, he didn't give the authority to negotiate and execute.
You can lock in a better number at the time of negotiating.
Do it, but just inform us.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
And Mr. Navah, are you, I mean, you're only dealing with Moreno, correct? Like, you're, you're, you're working with him, sir?
Correct, yes. And Ms. Riggs?
Or Ms. Riggs?
I make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve, item C.
I'll second.
Trustees, I have a motion from Mr. Martinez and a second by Mr. Rodan, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rodan.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry it took so long, sir, thank you for your patience. Next item, sir?
Trustees, uh, discussing consider approval of revisions to compensation plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And trustees, I, I want to apologize, I think this is the second or third time we bring it back, but as we've developed, with the new compensation and, and all of our sheets, if we noticed anything that's wrong, anything that's missing, things like that, you'll notice in the packet, anything that was highlighted was either missed or, uh, or we had to make an adjustment, even as, even as early as, uh, our new director of, of safety security, uh, that is now, and then we had to make some adjustments to that too. But the, the main thing is, you'll have a more of a solid plan that you move forward with, and I want to be very transparent with you all at all times. So that's why, uh, we're bringing it forward again, if you want to review it, if the areas have any questions, uh, but at this point, we'll just continue moving forward and hopefully there's not anything else that we have to look at, but we just want to do it the right way.
Madam President, Dr. Moreno, uh, board members, I've provided for you on page ninety-six a summary of the changes to the revisions that we're bringing forth this evening and we've also highlighted in the packet. That way you would be able to see those, um, those changes, and I, Dr. Moreno said, it's revisions, either items that we realize should have not been there or, um, corrected amount, et cetera, Ms. Riggs and I have gone through it again and like, um, Dr. Moreno stated, we want to be transparent and make sure that everything that's in the compensation plan, any changes brought to the board um, for your review and approval. So, uh, based on the summary, I would open up to see if anyone has any questions based on what we highlighted in yellow and summarized on page ninety-six.
Academic Club sponsor, Ms. Stevens, that's, that's at the elementary level, that's.
At the academies, yes, sir, that's for each one of the academies, in case they want to have a, um, to, to be able to sponsor a club after school.
Okay.
At the Leadership Academy, on Ice Academy, or at the.
Targeting a specific area.
Yes, yes.
Have you initiated what you're running through?
At the high school, sir, we, we have as a administrative intern, we have one of our teachers, an actual associate, Ms. White, who half a day, she's, she actually got all her certifications, she's repubbing admin. She's helping us out there because, and culinary arts, we have a teacher and a half. So what that's allowing us to do is that the one who's a half actually takes a full, she does half a day and in the afternoon she works with us like to help out discipline and things like that. But, you know, you're building your pipeline, doing that one.
I see that S L P supervisor, it says if needed, right now we have it.
Right, we don't, we don't need it at this moment, but if we're, if we happen to need it, we wanted to make sure we've included in our already.
It's already there.
That we wouldn't come back to the board.
I make a motion, we approve, sir.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry, Paul.
I have a question, oh, on the, so, okay, so we're looking at the stipends, right? So I see that junior high head coach, uh, Ted Rock, from, went down to twenty-two fifty?
No, it was a typle, it, it was twenty-two fifty last year.
Okay. So, yeah, I see it on here also.
On that particular sport, it was, it's, that's a junior high and it was a typle. It was our, our.
Another, uh, high school, uh. Took up the hourly and it said, it said, it said twenty-five hundred stipend.
Yes, because we, um, we thought it would be an hourly, um, individual, but it's not, it's a, it's an actual certified, um, coach. So we also went ahead and made a notation on, on page, on page twen- ninety-eight. If a coaching position is not filled by a certified teacher, an hourly rate will be applied to a non-exempt employee. We went ahead and made that notation so that we don't have to bring it back to the board every time. I mean, Coach Perry's still trying to fill some of these slots based on the coaches that he has. But in the event that it is an hourly person, then it's gonna be based on that hourly rate. And if it's not an hourly person, then of course it's the rate that's there. But that way, with that statement, we would, we want to make sure that we keep the board informed and exactly so we feel that if we put that statement, we wouldn't have to come back. Correct. You're welcome.
Trustees, I have a motion from Mr. Martinez, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Wodan. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, approval of final twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget amendments, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Ms. Rigs? Welcome back.
So these are our final budget amendments, there are three. The first one is for athletics, uh, they're having more games, uh, in district, I think. There was a couple of more games that were scheduled for out of town that I think are happening here, so they're putting more money into their security. So that requires, uh, a budget change from function thirty-six to fifty-two. And then I realized in December that when we did that, um, uh, bond refunding, that I never brought the, the budget for amendment in the INS fund, so that's, uh, budget amendment number twenty-seven. And then budget amendment twenty-eight, um, is me just moving funds within the functions uh, to make sure that we have enough for salaries. You know, we're, we increased, uh, our salaries, our teacher salaries pretty significantly. So that payroll accrual is going to be, um, a little bit larger than what I had anticipated at the end of the year. And so I just wanted to put some money in the different functions so that I hopefully do not below a funk, a funk, a function and cause those issues with the audit.
Make a motion that we approve line item D, ten E.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second by Mr. Wodan and Mr. Martinez, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Trustees, on that, discuss and consider adoption of the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed budget.
Trustees, do I have a motion?
I'll second.
I have a first by Mr. Marukin and a second by Mr. Martinez, any questions or discussion? I have a question. So any, any changes from now on, it's gonna come back as an amendment?
If we need to, money's within a function, yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
For the record, this is at that deficit.
This is at the one point zero.
Zero eight.
Zero eight four. This is at the one million dollar deficit.
But we're not raising taxes, correct?
Well, that's the next item.
That's in the next item. That's in the next item.
That's the next item, yes.
So.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Next item.
Thank you.
Trustees, I would like to discuss and consider adoption of the Robstown I S D tax rate.
Trustees, do I have a motion?
Although I have a question though. So, again, we dropping it, but still the amount is the same, so taxpayers will not have to pay additional taxes.
If their taxable values stay the same, they would see a reduction in their taxes. But for truth and taxation purposes, will you, I'm not sure who's gonna read the resolution because the resolution needs to be read completely. We are going to be stating that we are increasing taxes on a hundred thousand dollar home. But that is only because they're only looking at our, our, our tax, our property tax revenue. They're not looking at the full picture about, you know, our state aid and how our tax revenue impacts that. So it's page one thirteen.
Okay.
Well, thirteen is the.
The resolution of the board to set the tax rate.
The dollar amount has decreased by six cents, correct?
Yes.
The dollar amount has de- has decreased by six cents, but the reason we're stating that it's an increase is because we're increasing it more than their recommendation. They're recommending that our tax rate be one, a dollar thirty-three?
One point three three, that's the known new revenue tax rate, that's the, in the eyes of the comptroller's office, that's the rate we would need to adopt to get the same amount of tax, property tax revenue as last year.
And we're not, we're doing the one, one fifty-one or one fifty?
The one point five zero three two.
Yeah. That is why we're stating, that we have to state legally that it's an increase because we're not going based off of their recommendation. But bottom line, we're going down six cents.
It's, it's good.
It's crazy.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have the correct verbiage?
That's a resolution.
Do I have a motion?
Just read this whole resolution.
The whole page?
So, so you want the motion read it all with, on, yes. Yep, because you're gonna read it.
Okay. Uh, resolution of the board to set tax rate on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. On this day, we, the board trustees of the Robstown Independence School District hereby levy or set the tax rate of a hundred dollar valuation for the district for the tax year twenty twenty-two at a total tax rate of one point five zero three two to be assessed and connected by the duly specified assessor and connector as follows. Zero point nine eight three two for the purpose of maintenance and operation and zero point five two zero zero for the purpose of paying principal and interest on debt. Such taxes to be assessed and connected by the tax officials designated by the district. This district will raise more ta- uh, will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by twelve point thirty-three percent and will raise taxes and maintenance operations on a one hundred thousand dollar home by approximately one hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. I hear a make a motion for the resolution as well.
Trustees, I have a, a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, a first by Mr. Martinez and a second by Mr. Marukin. Any questions or discussion?
Just, uh, I just have a, a, a quick statement. I mean, it's just, so the folks from Robstown can understand that, yes, it's an increase, but in reality, it's decreasing if their appraisal value stayed the same.
Correct.
So this is technically, uh.
stays the same or it can increase the pre- the, the property value increases?
If the appraisal value went up, well, then, oh, of course, they're gonna pay more taxes on this.
But this is, it was last year.
The tax rate is never that.
Our tax rate from last year was one dollar fifty-six cents. This year, it's one dollar and fifty cents, so it went down six cents. So depending on where your home is, value at, it's gonna go up or down and that depends on residence.
Technically, that just the verbiage is a, is a, is an increase, but the actual tax rate isn't.
Right, so old one was a dollar fifty-six, new one is a dollar six. Correct, I'm sorry, a dollar fifty, a dollar fifty. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
For the record, that has been super majority, I think that is a super majority, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Trustees, we'd like to discuss and consider authoris- authorization to carry forward and re-appropriate twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two encumbrances and fund commitments in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so this is an item that I brought forth last year, uh, I don't think that we had done it previously. But what this will allow me to do is take any purchase orders that we have open now that were not fulfilled and will allow me to carry them forward into the new year. Uh, at this time, I don't have those purchase orders identified, last year I told you that I would only be doing, um, technology. Now, this year, within the last two weeks, we have issued a significant amount of purchase orders. We did the access control to, for our elementaries. Uh, I issued one for backflows, I think it was about thirteen, uh, fifteen thousand, somewhere around there. Uh, we have, um, several other, um, big ticket items that I'm not exactly sure one hundred percent that we're gonna be completely done by August thirty-first. So what I'm requesting is that you go ahead and allow me to move or carry forward some of those, um, encumbrances. Now, last year I told you that I didn't know where, what they were, but that at a future board meeting, I would bring those to you. And so again, I would do the exact same thing in the fall and I would bring and I would let you know what those encumbrances are. Now, what I did this year was I didn't have to bring a budget amendment because, for those encumbrances, because I had salary savings. So we kept the budget the same and with salary savings, I was able to pay off those encumbrances that we had, um, created in the previous year. Now, these encumbrances here, I may bring forward to you, but I will probably bring you a budget amendment asking you to increase the budget, which would potentially be increasing the deficit uh, so that we could continue, uh, with those projects. Now, again, we're gonna try really hard, you know, salary savings are usually things that, you know, we know we're gonna have. Not everyone is going to get, um, not every position is going to be filled. Not every position that's filled is going to have all of their salaries paid out. You know, people get on F M L A, they run out of leave, they're out, they're docked. Um, so we plan for all salaries, but they don't always realize. So if that were to occur, I would again attempt to use salary savings so that we roll these POs if they're needed to be rolled. Uh, we can hopefully use the budget that we just adopted to cover those expenses. But if I can't, I would come back to you with those encumbrances and a budget amendment.
You're saying increase the deficit.
I would, I would like to see.
Up until, how much money though, are you, are you, we, we want to be authorized?
Like a projected number as to if we're gonna do that, how much will increase the deficit?
So I don't.
Off the top of your head.
Okay, um.
Just because I, once we said that, it's like.
Like, but I would, what I would, I would say no more, I mean, just the Johnson controls, last time, that, that PO was about sixty-three thousand dollars. Uh, we have, um, access control, which I believe was about forty thousand dollars, so right, right there is a hundred thousand dollars.
And that wasn't allocated?
The access control, I will say, is a federal program, right? But I still need to be able to roll it, so I would need that authorization. But the Johnson controls for the sixty thousand dollars that did come out of general fund. Uh, we issued for the backflows, it's about fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, that would have to come out of the general fund, but we could use the maintenance budget for that when it does come time to pay. So, I mean, if it's a maintenance project, like I said, we could use the maintenance budget. I just don't know what repairs, what issues will come up next year.
And those are kind of necessary.
They're, 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 they're required.
That is, I, I, I never will ever ask to roll anything, you know, especially when we issue POs kind of late in the game. I usually let our ba- budget managers know, if this comes in after September first, it's gonna come out of your new year budget. I'm not rolling, I'm not gonna ask the board to roll that over. But these are big ticket items, these are maintenance projects that need to get done. So I would like to roll them over so that we don't have to cancel those POs and then start the process over again.
And if they needed to be done, why were they not done in the year that they were budgeted?
Well, like for access control and for backflows and things like that, you know, when they, those things come to our attention, like today, I found out when I got to work today that there's a water leak, um, at Hattie Martin. So I issued the PO today to have Shoreline Plumbing come to look at it. So it could be that, um, it takes them a week or two, we're already the twenty-second, so it's possible that ha- it happens into the new year. Um, something like that, it's possible that we'll just use the maintenance budget.
The PO would done now, but it falls into the next fiscal year.
Correct, what you had said earlier is if there's labor money that you would use, you would just pay it off of that so it wouldn't come to the board for approval? I, I would like to see any rolling PO, even if there is money to cover it, wouldn't you guys like to?
Yes, and I brought that to the board last year.
Amount, yeah.
I brought that to the board, we had two laptops, it's from bilingual.
Well, the, if it's over a certain amount, yeah, of course, we don't wanna, you know, make a penny every PO, but maybe over twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand.
Okay, yes, and I, and like I said, I did bring them back to the board, I said I would. Um, but we were able to use, like I said, salary savings for those and it was, I think it was a couple of laptops for bilingual and I want to say another. I know, um, our P and P, Saint Anthony's was looking for twelve desks, fourteen desktops out of their S R money that was transferred over. In full transparency, I, I bring all, uh, POs that are rolled over to the board so that they can see, a lot of times, they might not even come out of the general fund. But I just wanted to be, um, ex- extremely transparent that we just had those fire alarm POs issued, we're working on access control. Uh, we have a couple of maintenance projects that they just came up at the end of the year where it's taken us a while to get some of the quotes and so, um, they might not get done before the end of the fiscal year. If they're done within the fiscal year, we have the budget, everything's fine. Um, but I can't say for sure that those projects will occur by April.
So if this item is approved, you're gonna come back next board item, board meeting or after budget closes and you're gonna bring it, so this?
Um, probably October, November.
Because it's kind of a big, um, month.
Yes, I have to wait to see what's billed, what actually went through.
All right, okay. Trustees, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a first by Mr. Wodan and a second by Mr. Martinez, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, sir.
Trustees, like, we'd like to, uh, discuss and consider renewal of contracts for self-funded workers' insurance and excess workers' compensation insurance.
So for our workers' comp plan, we are self-funded and so we went out for bid last year for, um, a workers' comp, um, insurance and an excess workers' comp compensation insurance. And so we wanted to renew for another year, the contract was for one year. Um, ours, our contract is with TriStar for self-funded workers' compensation insurance and Frost Bankhead Investment Insurance for excess workers' compensation insurance. Um, attached is the fee proposal for TriStar, their annual fee is twenty-five hundred dollars.
Did it go up?
I'm sorry.
Did it go up or did it?
Um, the, the proposal fee for TriStar stayed the same, that's their fee. Um, then after that, as we have claims, that then just varies depending on how many claims we have from what, um, the extent of those claims are.
I see it says, I'm sorry, I can't read, I see it says renewal, so we're doing it for?
Yes.
And you're conflicting with what you think that is?
You're regular.
You're recommending?
Yes.
I make a motion.
I have a question on page one twenty-three, what is that, ninety-five dollars per hour?
For the time and expenses charges, do you ever do, use that?
For the time and expenses charges, do you ever do, use that?
Well, I'm looking on page one twenty-three.
So ninety-five dollars per hour?
Uh-huh.
So whenever they have claims, it depends, the annual fee is twenty-five hundred dollars, but whenever they have a claim, they start working on our behalf. And so the hourly rate is ninety-five dollars.
In addition to the twen- the annual-
Twenty-five hundred dollars, yes.
Okay.
There are several fees involved, it just depends on the claim. Do we have to get an attorney involved? Okay, well then, there is a fee for the attorney. Is this just a simple, they went to the doctor and they're just, you know, filling out the paperwork, there's a small fee for that?
Trustees, I have a first and a second, any more questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, next item, instruction?
Trustees, we'd like to discuss and consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Delmar College, Robson Elementary School District, and Robson Early College High School, dual credit and continuing education programs. This is something that we bring to yearly, trustees, uh, and so again, it's for your consideration.
Trustees, do we have any questions? This is every, this is every year, right?
No, is there anything different?
Yes, it's every year, the only difference this year is that there's two contracts, one with the school district and one with early college high school.
Hmm.
In the past, it was just one, this year, there's two identical contract, but it's one that's with the school district and one with early college.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for seeing that.
And what you, I have a question, you have, you have one in ce- central, is that what you say? Robson Elementary-
They have a, uh, MOU with the school district.
And what is that, what's the difference, I guess?
There is-
No difference at all?
There is.
It's just, you just said this, because they're two-
Delmar has now sent two different contracts. Okay, I mean, two, two contracts, I think there's something on their end, that they're trying to, to correct their items. So we've got the contract with the school district.
I think it, it has to do with the blond thing, or that thing that's on the ballot.
And with the, the high school. But you take a look at the contracts, and I was reviewing that, it's not a contract, with the MOUs, and you take a look at the, the, the course listings, they're all the same course listings of what we're offering. It's, uh, of course, the, uh, enrollment and dual credit courses or the continuing net programs, either, either one. But there's a con- there's a MOU with the school district and then MOU with the, with the high school.
I guess, um, that's on page, or just on other one?
So the one with the, with the ISD starts on one fifty and it ends on page one seventy-five. And then the one with, uh, um, RE CHS starts, the memorandum starts on page one seventy-six.
And Deanna, you okay with this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright.
Trustees, do I have a motion?
How long?
I'll say it.
I have a first by Mr. Roldan and a second by Mr. Martinez, any more questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, next item.
Trustees, like to discuss and consider revisions to the Robson ISD school calendar for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, we just have two. Uh, wanna make sure that we have an updated trustee since you already approved the calendar, and that one is the graduation date. And what's the new graduation date?
The twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh, it would be moved from Friday, May twenty-sixth to Saturday, May twenty-seventh. And the other change is the staff development day that is, uh, originally scheduled February twentieth. We would like that to be changed to February twenty-seventh.
What was the reason for that?
The lead forward consultants.
Why do we want to move the graduation date?
Because of the, because of the-
Yeah, part, part of it is the, the con- uh, because everybody knows, trying to get the contract set up. Um, now we are having graduation a week earlier as well, compared to-
So the seniors are graduating?
Before the rest of the kids, and then it works out for that Saturday.
Last year, there was a concern, Dr. Moreno, it, it's not a week early, is it?
No.
Because it was a Saturday before Memorial Day, because last year, there was a concern about it being on a holiday weekend. People are out of town, so it is on the same, it is on the same.
It is the same.
This was already set up with the, the adjustment of it, because seniors graduate-
No, the seniors, no, sir, the, excuse me, on the nineteenth of May is the seniors' last day.
Yes.
I wonder why they can't graduate, why can't we have graduation on the twentieth? No, last year was the same day, it was a Saturday before Memorial.
It was the-
It's on page, um-
It's on page two oh four. The calendar that the board has presently approved in its current has graduation on May the twenty-sixth, on Friday.
And she wants to move it to the twenty-seventh on a Saturday.
To the twenty-seventh, because, um, they're hard to skip entertainment.
Which is the same as last year, that's what happened last year, it was approved for Friday, and then she moved it to Saturday.
And that's gonna be Memorial Day weekend?
Mm-hmm. It was Memorial Day weekend last year also.
You're right.
I mean, it, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, sir, last year, I know there was, you know, we can't make everybody happy, I know this. But do we wanna have graduation on a Mon- on a weekend, on a holiday weekend?
I thought that, I thought we were talking about the-
It's my understanding that it was skip entertainment, and that was, um, they, they were already contracted on the twenty-sixth with another district, so we have to move our graduation to the twenty-seventh. Now, I'm not, I'm not aware that they have the twentieth available, that I do not know.
Well, it, it, that's really, it's like an operational thing, I'm just throwing out our, my concerns, that's all.
Yeah, but you, yeah.
Because it's a Memorial Day weekend.
So I'm looking at the invoice, because I worked on this PO during summer break, and I'm just curious, but it, it says Saturday, May twentieth. So I didn't know if it had changed again.
Hmm.
I have it on my cali- my calendar, it's the twentieth.
That's what I have.
It's a week ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Can we, can we table it until we talk to Ms. Gravino, sir?
I, I know that it's a week ahead.
Can we table it after executive?
Oh, you're gonna find out from her?
Yeah.
Oh, sure?
Yeah, we'll bring it back.
Can we bring it back after executive? That way I can-
I'll make the motion to table proof.
I'm, I'm okay with that financial-
Because I remember the discussion of the seniors a week early.
That's, that's my statement.
Okay, okay, alright. I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, you make the motion to-
To table after, after executive.
After exec- after executive session.
Trustees, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I've been tabled until after executive. Uh, trustees, do I have a motion to go into executive?
Both, I'll say it.
I have a first by Bobby and a second by Sessa, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The board will now go into closed session and pursuant section to five-five-one point zero seven-four of the Texas Government Code. The board will adjourn into a closed session for the purpose of considering the appointments and employment evaluations and recommendations.
I'm starting, sir.
Missy?
Missy.
How?